Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Leewood Planning Commission's regular meeting. At a preamble tonight, this is for my colleagues on the dais. The heat has played havoc with our IT systems here in the city, and as a result, our microphones were not working. So I would encourage you all to sit down, out, and speak up so folks in the audience can hear you, and even more importantly, so people on the Zoom call can hear you. I will say to the folks on Zoom call, Commissioner Guedes, and I don't see Mark yet, but maybe he's around. We can hear you through our screen that we have here, so. We apologize to the extent you're unable to hear what we have to say, but we'll do our best to speak up. So with that, I will call the meeting ordered and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Harrowell?
Here.
Commissioner McGurran?
Here.
Mr. Belzer?
Here.
Commissioner Boyce?
Mattson.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Block?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Guedes?
Here.
Chair?
President. So I find that a quorum is present, and we can move on to the business of the evening. And to begin, we'll look at the agenda that was presented to the commission, and if that, if the staff have any revisions or amendments to the agenda as it was submitted.
We do have.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was submitted? Commissioner Coleman?
Motion to approve the night's agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was submitted, the commission please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. I believe that we have three sets of meeting minutes to review this evening. The first one that will take up are the minutes of the May ninth, twenty twenty-three work session that was, as indicated, was conducted on May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Do any commissioners have revisions or corrections to the minutes, the draft minutes we submitted? Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page thirteen. One of the comments, probably three quarters of the way down.
That's on page thirteen. About two-thirds or three-quarters of the way down, they're currently in the draft that says, are we the other city in the area that provides material on multifamilies? And the corrections to be the only city, correct?
So that is correct.
Yeah.
And then on page seventeen. The last one, when Mr. Klein is speaking, just sort of correction, spelling, instead of mark, M A R C.
So page seventeen, the last comment by Mr. Klein, at the end of the first line, there's a reference to Mark. That should be Mark in all caps, M A R C. Any other revisions? Commissioner Block?
I had a few mineers. Well, on page four, the first item where I spoke, the fire station is new, and then it should have been to the plan. It should have to the plan.
Page four, your comment is fire station number four is new to the plan.
And then the only other one, I was on page six, my third comment, second line, I believe it should have been every year, every other year. Mill and overlay, that was three million dollars.
Right, every, your, your third comment, second line, currently reads that the three million, every other year. That was with the three million dollar for the stormwater, what meant to be split there was that the three million dollars every other year for mill and overlay.
Correct.
That was with. The three million per storm.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Thank you.
Other revisions, corrections? If not, do I hear a motion?
Chairman?
Commissioner Coleman?
An approval of the planning commission work session meeting for May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Andrew Block?
Andrew Dais.
Right, and that, thank you, Commissioner McGurran. All those in favor of approving the work session meeting minutes for May ninth, twenty twenty-three as revised, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the meetings for the work session for May ninth, twenty twenty-three are approved as revised. I believe that takes us then to June the thirteenth, planning commission meeting. For that date, are there revisions or corrections to the draft minutes that were submitted to us for the June thirteenth evening?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner McGurran?
Thank you, sir. On page seven. Under the comment towards the bottom, about fourth paragraph up. The last sentence says, it doesn't sound like there is going to be a lot of them, and a lot of them is misspelled with the extra L and the black space.
Got it, thank you. Any else, Commissioner McGurran?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other revisions?
Yes, sir. I have a few mineers on page three. That's the first comment by Commissioner Stevens. Close to the bottom of the paragraph, the left there, and talks about roofing materials and one being suede. And that should have been suede. Even though suede, suede is very tough. But not really for ruins, is that right?
Okay, so it should be suede, suede, and then further down, Mr. Klein. Mentioned Chairman Oakes. Accurately indicated that the mass looked more at scale, and I think your intent in that was. Indicated that in the past, we looked more at scale. The commercial buildings, so the office of that size was. Okay? I'll accept that, okay? And then lastly, let's see, on. Page eight, under Stevens. Kind of at the bottom of that paragraph, or the sentence in the last work session. That Mr. Klein mentioned that. There should be. Or that it was used on the units with the community pool was forced to have concrete solid. And I think, I think the intent there is in the last work session, you mentioned that. A multi-family housing project. That. It, it should be used for commercial, no, I'm sorry, in the last work session, you mentioned that for a multifamily housing project. That it was allowed on the units, but the community pool building was forced out. That, is that? Yes, I'd say that's correct. And is that good? Thank you. Any other things? That's a thing. Commissioner Block?
I was not at this meeting, Mr. Chairman, just carefully so that I didn't miss anything. Under Commissioner McGurran's comment on page three, this would be the second comment. Instead of, I know that it's not subjective, excuse me, I think that might be objective instead of. Okay? And then the only other thing that I had a few theories with that is on page eight, this is your comments, Mr. Chairman. This is, I guess, in the middle of the page, three hundred pounds per square is what that should be. I don't believe him, I don't know if he did say, but it should be per square.
Agreed.
Yeah, and then there's another one, same section, fourth line. Pounds per square.
Correct. Thanks, definitely.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other changes to the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes? If not, do I hear a motion?
Chairman?
Commissioner Coleman?
An approval of planning commission meeting for amendments for June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three opening.
Your second. Thank you, Mr. Belzer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it, and the meeting minutes for June thirteenth are approved as revised. Last event we have is for the. Meeting on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, one of our record short meetings, so it would be interesting to see what revisions are maybe here. Any commissioners have revision? Well, when you only have four pages minutes, that these things happen, so is there a motion to?
Chairman?
Commissioner Coleman?
An approval of the planning commission meeting minutes for June twenty-seventh development.
Thank you, your second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Belzer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Same sign. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved as they were submitted. I note that following cases have been continued to the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, that's case number thirty-nine dash twenty-three, The Majestic of Leewood. Request for approval of a preliminary flat, preliminary plan located at the southeast corner of one hundred thirty-fifth street and Mission Road. And case number sixty-two dash twenty-three, Island Street, Picklewall Court, and Walking Trail. Request for approval of a special use permit and preliminary plan located south of one hundred forty-third street and east of Null Avenue. That now brings us to the new business of the evening, and the commission now calls case number fifty dash twenty-three, Children of America Daycare Center, request for approval of a special use permit, preliminary plan. And preliminary flat located north of one hundred thirty-third street and east of Row Avenue. Does staff have a presentation?
We do.
Please receive.
Congratulations. I tried to project, but suddenly it started trailing off, so we're gonna speak up. The applicant is requesting approval of a special use permit, preliminary plan, preliminary flat, as chairman, as chairman for Children of America Daycare. Development of thirty ten thousand square foot building, but it's sixty-four thousand, six thousand, six thousand four square meters, essentially playground. Hours are proposed to be six thirty to six thirty, six thirty AM to six thirty PM on a evening Friday. The playground being used from nine AM to noon. Daycare's required special use permits to be about ten office district, which is the property located in. The applicant did have a required interact meeting on May eleventh, and the notes in the assignment sheet are included with the package. The preliminary flat is also included with this application, includes one, one lot, two point three seven acres, includes items such as the twenty-five foot tree preservation space. And as you might have seen, the stipulations, staff is stipulating that that tree preservation piece is enlarged, including west part of the, of the lots. West of the limits of construction. And the reason for that tree preservation, but of course, no trees are removed, especially on land or property line, because northern areas are single family residential districts. As mentioned before, the daycare facility will be ten thousand square feet, playground area will be on the north side, with landscape surrounding it. The entrance will face towards one hundred thirty-third street to the south, and we construct mostly of still veneer, stucco and glass. The height of the building may be twenty-six feet. And as you know, there are a couple of interesting aspects to this site. One, it's heavy tree, and two, it's the site of the Astor Hall dreamer sculpture. For the trees, the applicant did submit a report in August stating that there are four hundred fourteen caliper inches. Of healthy desirable trees that were being removed within the limits of construction. The LVO requires that any tree over twelve inches, perhaps would replace one inch to one basis. However, the LVO does allow that, for some exceptions, some, some requirements are met, such as staff, August, going out to visit the site. And determining that all replacement inches can't be placed on site with insufficient space, that that number can be reduced by fifty percent. City staff who went out, visited the site, and did determine that it was insufficient space to plant four hundred and fourteen inch replacement inches. So that number was reduced to two hundred and seven inches. On the, on the landscape plan, the RV that two hundred and seven inch replacement by any additional trees are what are required, as well as fixing larger tall tree. Such as orange tree, they're usually part of one and a half inches, they're showing two inch old trees in some locations. For the castle dreamer, we've been discussed this early on, but the applicant didn't agree to leave, or to allow the sculpture to remain. At its present location, and not only allow it to remain, but also include an access evenage over the sculpture, so the city can. Could access it for maintenance. And when the final fact comes in, the active evenage shown on the final fact, along with language, allowing the city access to the sculpture. Two deviations are being requested with the application. One is for a thirteen percent reduction on the front guard setback, and another is eleven percent reduction on the side guard setback. Both are below the maximum allowed induction for the deviation. The LVO does permit reduction in the step backs if the development compensates, both the space, not less than one to one ratio. And deviations will not adversely affect neighboring properties. As you saw in the staff report. Because the calculations, they are, as mentioned before, providing access evenage to compensate for those reductions in segments. And also, staff does not believe that reduction will adversely affect the neighboring, neighboring properties, even though there could be less. Smaller step back, there are, there are more trees being planted on the south side, as well as on the side or east side where they're asking for that. Without reduction, so the. The step back might be big ones, but smaller, but the trees are more. They're more of a stream. And staff is supportive of the deviations for those trees. The staff is also recommending approval of this, of these applications, stipulated in the staff report. If you have any concerns, I have any questions?
Thank you. I'm always amazed that there are two point three eight, sir.
Yeah.
Right, I've driven by that many times. Would never have guessed there was that kind of space. You have additional comments?
I mean, apparently there was a public work memo that should have been included in the package, but it was not, I guess it was left out. We're gonna make copies and make sure you get that for. Yeah. You have the fire department memo and. Part in the half of the lens.
Did the fire, did the fire marshal have any concerns?
Maybe not. There were some issues that need to be addressed prior to the final plan.
Mr. Spovill, did Public Works have concerns?
Yes, we did, like, pull that out and all.
We wanted, we'll go ahead and have you address that before we start asking questions. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. If that seemed to be in there, so to be determined how to keep copies.
It would probably be a good idea if we got a copy, but I don't want to hold up the proceeding, should it, ask somebody to make copies, move ahead, but Mr. Spovill.
Hey, Brian Spovill sitting here.
No, we don't have a mic, so never mind.
Public Works memo included a comment regarding the preliminary flat, and then. The final flat will need to be, will need to be edited or modified to include, or extend the drainage conduits over existing pipes. There are a couple drainage pipes currently on the property that have dissets over them, but they extend outside of those dissets, so the revised flat, or the final flat will need to be. Show drainage conduits to extend over those existing pipes. The. It was recommended that the. Access evenage over the arc piece be extended. Further out than the current preliminary flat shows around the arc piece. They're not providing very much room on the north side of that arc piece for access dimensions. Then, and these can be addressed at the final flat stage, so they aren't critical to remote seating, but they are documented in the memo. The traffic study did show, they did provide a trip generation, access, they looked into access space inside distances. Were evaluated, and based on the proposed project, there were no significant additional traffic issues, and no additional traffic improvements are required. The preliminary stormwater study we proceeded to review, they are proposing an additional data validation onsite and inlet filters to address. Increase in per piece area, and, and in order to be BNP level of service, and those do look acceptable. They are proposing a drive-on to act as a BNP with data plan in the south end floor. In addition to those comments, Public Works memo includes several of our standard comments and related to. Parking lot pavement being standards, permanent structures, monuments, not being placed in the roadway. These are, you've seen these before on other memos, and they're in the process of needing to be documented in the memo for your own particular priority vote.
But you, you indicated that the three major concerns that you identified, those are all things that could be addressed at the time of the final flat.
Public Works staff supports the project that is proposed based on our Public Works concerns, including those related to the traffic study and stormwater.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spovill. Appreciate you ripping out of it last minute this way. Questions for staff? I'll start with Commissioner Block.
I don't want to take a lot of time, but just, it just seems unique, and the sculpture is on private property, I guess, is that the best way? I mean, I think. At least all the other sculptures that I'm familiar with, I think Roman on a city lane, I mean, which was the, which brief history of that, you know? Yeah, we have been working with Parks Department, from what I understand, and what artists thought that it was appropriate site. For that sculpture, they liked the natural setting, the trees surrounding it, that's where these place. And then I have some questions about the, maybe I'll put over the easy one, the, this is a little bit unique too, I thought, and that the. Three-foot brick wall around the parking lot typically has a berm. Yeah, I just, it wasn't real easy for me to see it when I get, I mean, what was the reason for that? I don't know, I called you in, the wall printed the berm.
Yeah, it's a very tight site, but the goal was always to save as many trees as possible. So even with the three-foot berm, especially on that north side, it would go into twenty-five, twenty-five foot tree preservations that. That were once and for this, the berm. And the same with the other side, it'd go out further and just, you know, that, that tree, but. We're trying to work with the applicant, and it's also an option to be, to be LVO as, however, three-foot berm or a three-foot wall. Then, then one other, a couple of quick questions, we went, we went into the harvest, but they're name, it looks like the, I don't know. What I guess I'm really happy, red dots on the aerial, they seem to go really far to the west. And I'm not sure if that's pretty, that they're going to be removed, it seemed like that's not impacted by the berm, but I'm, maybe I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question, and like a time for clarification, if you can get to that, that page, and it is difficult to see. There's a black line that goes through the site, that's the limits of construction. So everything east of that black line, so it will be taken, taken now. The red trees are, are undesirable or unhealthy trees, and the gray trees are healthy environmental trees that over twelve inches. Everything outside of that line to the north and to the west are going to remain, whether they're healthy or undesirable. Okay, and then I don't know, but it was, I think that any artist we both report, there was a mention of some trees around sculpture or in that area that were. Planted at some point on, you know, that they weren't volunteer trees, in very good condition, but I didn't see anything that referenced addressing those. Will that be addressed with all this or not? I'm sorry, which, which trees? I thought the harvest report, there was a mention of, of trees that were planted around the sculpture and around that kind of area. They're not looking very good today, because the other trees have kind of taken them, but I didn't see anything that indicated that they would be addressed, either being planted. And maybe it was in there, I just didn't see it on the.
Yeah, I might have the applicant maybe address that question. Yeah, I might have the applicant maybe address that question. Uh and I I go up the report as well and see if I can address that later on, react to the applicant's presentation. Okay, and then and and maybe you just said this, but just made it clarified. So then the trees that aren't going to be impacted, that money to be taken down, this construction. Again, the artist's report, it talks that they mentioned that there was a lot of root growth and stuff that was kind of invasive and that will not be addressed. It's it it will remain as long as it's not in the.
Correct.
Yeah, it's outside the limits of construction, that will remain.
Okay, I mean my last question.
Uh just on the uh, there's a recommendation, I believe. Uh before, right before the stipulations about the E V charging and uh. Root uh solar. I I mean, is how does that work? Because it's not, those are not required in the L D O today and this is just kind of a. I I I don't know how you.
Yeah, that's correct. It's it's found in the L D O, we've been stipulated for for this type of building. However, you know, Leewood wants to be at the forefront of. Uh this newer energy, charge of patients solar, so we're always regardless of. Uh development, whatever type of development, we want to push uh those two islands and. We just really hope that maybe over the next couple of weeks before the council can come to get agreements. Uh maybe they charge the state, E V charge the patient and also maybe the uh building solar.
So is there any plans, I guess, maybe to to amend the L D O at some point near future? Because I think the next two cases have to be. You know, recommendations, suggestions to maybe so to have something more objective.
Yeah, I I don't think there's anything at the time. I'll I'll let Mark Mark find China that he he wants.
At some point, we would probably be bringing forward an L D O amendment with regard to the solar and also the E V charging stations. However, at this time, uh we've been working with the applicants to see um if they'd be willing to to do that. You've seen the stipulation. Uh on a couple of other applications that have been before you uh in the last couple of planning commission meetings. It is kind of the direction that we're we're looking to go, but at this point, as Dan said, we don't have any development ordinance that that requires it.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Commissioner Bowman.
I mean, it's just a couple of questions. Um building itself, the building is one story?
It it's yeah, it's one story, it's had a two floor.
Right, that that was my next question. From the exterior drawings that we have, those look like two stories. It's just sound is higher on the inside or?
Uh I believe so, but I have the applicants that trust that.
And then part of the biggest concern is to the neighbors to the north and west side. There's there's several. Neighbors that are right adjacent to the property. Uh what we mentioned about the. The preservation, it's not going to be filling the properties. Four, one, two, three, four, possibly five homeowners that are going to be on the north side of this fault. Uh what what are they going to be all see? How much screening is going to be there? We've elaborated a little bit about this.
Yeah, that's a good question. And and we do think uh the twenty five foot preservation is a well help. But also if you look north of the property, there are existing trees on the homeowner's property as well. So between that and the trees are being saved, it should be pretty well screened. And then you add in the new trees that are being planted with this phenomenon. So it should be fairly well hidden through the trees uh. From those single family homes.
Now, my other question is just to confirm that hours of the playground. Playground hours, I mean, you know, six thirty. For for people that sleep in.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's something we didn't talk about in the outfit. We didn't want kids shopping, they talk off at six thirty. Only going straight out to the playground.
So I understand the street rail is just down the street and I know there's probably more to that, but not that's gonna. Wait until the end of the day during the time period, but since this is right adjacent to the sub which is going to allow.
Yeah. That's a good point.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Other questions for staff? Well, I I guess I wanna follow up a little bit on the questions that Commissioner Block writes. Um. Just for context, is is this sculpture actually owned by the city?
Well, I I assume.
Yeah, yeah. Uh this is. This is Mark. Yes, yes, it is.
And and under what sort of terms is it currently located on the site that it's located?
I don't believe that it's been specifically uh spelled out. I think that that's one of the things that we're trying to do with this. Application is to make sure that we have the terms as far as uh allowing this, the um sculpture to stay there. As well as to have access to it. So this is what we're trying to kind of fix with with this plan.
And and I may look to misnai on on this question, but at least my experience, there's a difference between an access easement. And an easement, a a permanent easement that for that. Permits the sighting of, for instance, this sculpture and is that is that issue the right of the city? To continue to have uh that sculpture located there uh permanently? Is that. Addressed anywhere in the stipulations here?
I don't know if that's specifically on a part of the.
Mars United legal, the city done on the sculpture is placed by agreement, it came in them early to mid two thousands. It was supposed to be followed up with something filed in the register of easement that was never filed, which is why we're in this situation now. It's on private property, it was owned by the city. We haven't yet drafted the easement, we would plan to drop it, so the city has. Uh all the rights, has the needs for this.
So it's more than specifically access equals, my concern.
Yes.
That would be addressed.
Yes, we talked about a different option that they could use the property, but that would involve a new flat and so and what's we have.
But. I think this is one of the key. Examples of public art in in Beethwaite. I want to make sure that we not only have. An easement that lets us have access to a lots there, but also ensures that it continues to be present. I I may well ask that same question if they have. And then, oh, this follows up on a question of Commissioner Bowman's. On at least ripe receive to be in the rear setbacks, setbacks that are to the north. What what will be? Those setbacks, that's the deviation that's being asked for?
Uh the deviation, it's on, I'm sorry, I should sorry clarified our presentation, but uh setback deviations are on the front. Setback.
Which would be the south.
And then the side on the.
So standard setbacks will continue to exist on what I would think of as the rear or the north that is adjacent to the uh homes that are. Immediately.
Correct, including meaning the seventy five foot setback from office to what I mentioned.
Okay, all right. And then back one more question on the dreamer uh. The sculpture, I always get the name of the title of the law, but is. One of the things that makes it what it is is, as you said, the artist picked out the point that it's almost secluded back there. With the change that is going to be affected in terms of trees and it looks like there's parking area that that pulls up right close to it. Do we have a sense for what the aesthetic is going to be? Is it still going to be surrounded by by trees? Or is it basically, we're going to look over at the top of his head and see a park.
That that's possible. It's it's definitely not going to be the same as it was. Uh I find the applicant trusts that. Uh we tried to have the same as many trees as possible surrounding the sculpture. Uh obviously it's possible on the west side, but as you look to the east, there is that part of highway there. Uh they did uh best they could to plant new trees there, but it could be a while for those to come and. Have the same effect that the existing trees have.
Will there be room in the easement so that the city could actually plant bushes or some other sort of screening uh flora? Uh that would again protect the sculpture from, at least visually from the parking lot?
Well, that's something we can look at. I do believe there should be some room, at least in pictures. Uh trees, but uh we could look at maybe some shrubs on that west side.
And again, I I would look legal to think about how or if that can be affected to the uh to the easement as well, so that's. Beyond purely the sculpture, but perhaps some landscaping time as well. That's the only question. Those are the questions that I have. Any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Block?
I have a question, but just put on your, right before that one, on the uh. Full regulations on page three, on the actual back step, clear setback. It looks like seventy five feet required of riding six and a half.
Thank you. Any other comments for staff? If not, I would invite the applicant to step forward and sir, if you could state your name, business address, welcome to the Leewood riding commission. We're anxious to hear about uh Children of America daycare.
Uh thank you. Uh I'm Sam Malanowski, the S E B area, uh twenty five oh seven, I know, social. Also, there are a lot more uh due to some piece of our uh, I'm very, very common. As Dan, this is a very challenging side, I think, for the support of the different double, like, for the, they already felt. We're very excited to get to the point, even within the process. To answer the question on the landscaping around the dreamer, uh were. Would the additional landscaping we're having applied would replace the trees, would pay them down as soon as. I've served the dad, you'll see very much. Uh in fact, that's what it's been for life, but we we agree with everything Dan, all all the situations, we're good at that, uh additional support, I'm going to follow that. Um what we're likely to explore is the additional trees. Who have them replaced? Uh if the are replacing two hundred seven, that's about just four of the seven trees. Um and even doing the landscape thing, we felt we had it on there pretty good. Uh on figure it is that planning that's that. Uh to a burden might have survived. And I don't know if there's a deal or whether we may have planned to spread solar else or more with the city. I don't know, we'll have to. It's true, I need to be able for that. I just, we really strive to provide a sustainable and big plan. My long term, it actually looks, it looks good and it hurt. The passable agreement was done, that's the work that I meant for that, that's good. Uh everything west of the passable agreement, all that you're saying, there are many places that will be more decided on. I said, we really just said, or maybe turn the landscaping, the fact that it's surviving now. Appreciate any correction or is any uh missing. And I can add, I mean, that's.
Then I'll ask the questions for the applicant. I guess one, just to explore this this whole idea that legal definition of an access easement, does your client? And you or your client have an objection to that easement, the the terms and conditions that easement to be. Sufficiently expansive that it permit the dream there permanently, or are you, were you looking for? For the lawyer to call strictly an access.
I I can't answer that, but I don't actually want to. Most people, I don't think they follow that, they want to.
Mister Moore, do you mind, and again, hopefully your life will work. We have no problems here with I T tonight, but.
Yes, sir. Um can you guys? Are you guys able to hear?
Yes, you can.
Excellent, um.
If you can hear me, then we can hear you.
I I hear you. Yes, sir. Uh no, we have no objections with that whatsoever.
Thank you, Mister Moore. Other questions?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Guyette, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um just one point of clarification. I see, um and I know. Hours of operation was previously brought up, but I see on the staff report, it says six thirty A M starting hours of operation. But on the minutes of the or the uh recap of the neighborhood meeting, it says six A M. So is it, is, are the hours of operation beginning at six thirty or six A M?
I can answer that is six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, great. And then um another question follow up to that. It says that the playground hours will not be, will not begin until nine A M, so there. Is not a chance that there will be children outside playing before nine A M?
That is correct.
Great. And then one more question. You, I see uh serving about a hundred and fifty students. How uh much anticipated staff? For those hundred and fifty students?
I think as far as onsite or just total total staff in in general?
Both.
Total um staff is where from eighteen to twenty four employees. Um onsite at any given time should not exceed twelve employees.
Twelve at a time onsite?
Correct.
Great. And and then the I saw on the, I believe on the, one of the last sheets, there was the description showing. What playground equipment was going to be present? I'm not familiar with um daycare playground equipment, so are, do any of these make a lot of noise? Or are they relatively quiet?
Relatively quiet, yes, um. Uh yes, I mean, to answer the question, yeah, there's nothing that makes noises other than the, other than the children.
The children, great. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Guyette. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bowman?
Mister Chairman, uh. In fact, quite a number of of daycares that have come before us in the last couple of years, especially in this area. Just curious uh to see, this is going to be your first time to conduct the event? Um is this a franchise type operation or is it a facility going to be owned by the corporation?
This this is. Action by children of America.
Other questions for the applicant, Mister Chairman? Yes. Uh I I guess in in looking at the plans, um it seems like there's some. Uh inconsistencies on the fencing, I guess, in the staff report mentioned the. The playground extends to the north of the building by the six foot aluminum fence. The plans show fencing all across the east side of the building as well. And then on the west side. Is, can you explain or or describe?
Yeah.
How that fencing work?
Yeah, there's the fencing, it's brown, uh the sidewalks on the east and the west side, so if any students come out of those floors. Then they're kind of, and so they ended out out of the fencing area, and so they're fencing all the way on the east side and west side. And in every case, on the downside as well.
Okay. I guess the plans died during that fencing, like say on the west side, that's. On the edge of the curve and. You know, blocking the intersection space there and. The access to that sidewalk, but then. Seems to complicate the access to the entries that they don't.
I mean, we, what would we prefer is that sidewalk is like a nice building, but uh. That kind of the bar, you get a uh foundation planes in there. Um so so, yes. That uh that A D A access will be. Because of part of the whole back, so we make the Indian access more, yeah, the A D A, the A D A is gonna have that with you sidewalk here.
And then everyone in the parking lot. Just to access that sidewalk or to get in, they either go through these fence. Around, so they they would cut through.
They would have to go around. The fence, the fencing is is to protect uh any access, you know, with any students. Pre moved themselves, so yeah, we'll have to. Sidewalk be, forget it was that, yeah, I see. Yeah, that definitely will be the act of that you're asking for.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Hey, if there are no further questions, Commissioner Bullen, that's another question.
Uh, what would the age range? For kids in this school? More.
The question was about age range?
Correct, what's the age range for the the children that will be in the building?
Um. Preschool up into. Elementary. Uh, age.
Through through elementary, you said, right?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bullen. Commissioner Bellzer.
So just in looking at the diagram of the classroom, it said infants. So that's. Not exactly preschool age, so are there babies, are there infants? Some in the facility as well, and there's also. Think when Commissioner Guyette asked about staff. The answer was there would be twelve, no more than twelve staff on site. We're counting ten classrooms. Which would mean. At least two teachers per classroom with the number of kids that is allocated in each of these rooms, so I'm not sure that.
Yeah, we'll we'll bring, I'll bring further cle- clarification on the staff, uh. We'll console with C O A, you know, for uh, before the city council and and have. The exact numbers on that, that's what we've been told. So.
Okay, and can you address the infants? The building, there'll be infants as well?
There are infants, yeah. When I said preschool. Prior to school. Uh, upper elementary school, including infants.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellzer. All right, because this is a blundering plan and blundering class, the public hearing is called for. So the way that works with our commission is that we'll offer the public an opportunity to comment and ask questions. And then Mister Moore, Mister uh, Malanowski or Malanowski, you'll be offered the opportunity to come back to the podium and respond to any questions or or comments of the night. And then we may well have a question. So. With that, I will open the public hearing. Uh, typically, our rules are that for a public hearing, um, the public, the members of the public who testify will have four minutes. Uh, which our staff will time for us. Uh, once, I'm not sure the light is up there tonight, but. Uh, we'll try and give you some sort of indication when you're down to your last thirty seconds or so, and we'll ask if you finish up your comments. And then, uh, uh. We'll move on to the next, uh, member of the public who wishes to be heard. Pardon me, so with that, I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on case number fifty dash point three, the children of America daycare? I gave you that long explanation, if there's no one here to talk to. Yes, sir, if you could step forward and state your name and address for us, we would be great.
Sure, my name is Eric Boski.
Go ahead, put it on, you know, like this work will be able to hear you better, Eric, so.
Welcome, Gar, I'm. Thank you. My name is Eric Boski, four three four one, West thirty thirty second Terrace, um, so I'm one of the four of our customers. Um, I don't have any specific question, um, depending on that look at the developers and the integrity, so anything, question people put out, race has answered. So maybe more just general comment about is what initiative practice to back house who purchased. Painters ago, very much like you, I did not know that there was three and a half acres. Underdeveloped in there already, that could be the thought, we saw the basketball, we saw the vacuum. It was a nice creative area, and so that's just, that's one reason actually why we bought, we were looking at building a hundred and fifty亩 tree, I would argue like that, that they just. Hold the double trees, so we had like flat land, you know, the house of homes, so. That brought us to legal, to this point, the um. And speaking once we learned here, uh, or lived here, it was advised. Which five the most, the bid that was going to be developed into everyone's commission. It's a very tight site, it seems to involve a very large footprint for trying to base something in that, it should be there is, uh. It would be an awesome, which is very different than the legal, which I think is quite a special use, permanent, it's coming out, right? Non-stable, which doesn't have children, I love kids, I free my own, so. But, um, right, different hours, you're talking about a hundred and fifty is, um, you know, expect most families to have two to three children, so somewhere around about fifty cars, seventy-five cars. At various times in the morning, as early as six, six thirty, you know, asleep, at six thirty at night. Um, you'd have in the mornings, I would imagine, after I have fifteen, but maybe thirty minutes earlier, so maybe hard order, position six A M. You know, things like that, so. I think the noise aspect is really just. The thing that, um, we had a list to start about, but also, as we mentioned, um, the history of that satchel, like the basketball, they are just choose there because it's nice. First being natural woods, right, and it's not plant trees, it's not artificial out there around it. And I feel like I learned very, very street in general, kind of has that natural border from residential development into whatever, say, more commercial office, well, and in. And so, ah, you guys have a top job, and it's been very exciting to sit here for the first hour to win this thing from the book over, but, um. Trying to balance, right, development, there's certainly a character of assault. And the thing I think that, when I look directly to the sidewalk, clearing thirty thirty, addition arrow is fifty, completely undeveloped acres that can. Develop, and so instead of trying to fit this into a very small footprint where. There's a lot of more undeveloped and hidden that I've seen. I think that's all I have.
Thank you for your perspective, we really appreciate it, and as you can tell, we do have a great sort of trees. Um, here at me, but if you were anything, again, please. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard on case number fifty dash twenty-three? If not, I. Oh, is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to be heard? If not, I would, uh, ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Mister Bullen.
Close the public hearing.
You're a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mister Bellzer, all those favor closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying aye, the ayes have, the public hearing is closed. Uh, does the applicant have anything that they'd like to say in response to the testimony that we just heard? Thank you, Mister Malanowski, Mister Moore? Mister Steve, question? Oh, okay, let's get the eyes like, there was a question, right, is. Or Larry, do you want?
Oh, okay, it's, I'm gonna two story, yeah, it's just a one story, uh, you explain. It's just a one story.
One story, the second story, it was in here with this for parents.
And I guess I, I have a question for staff, uh, the, the question raised by the neighbor. Um, relative to vehicular access and it's at hundred thirty third street there. What, what? Provisions made in the plan for ingress and egress to traffic in the morning and evening?
As far as ingress, egress, I'm really. Definitely, I'll run into that.
Brian, this was Bill. If you can hear, uh, under generation, uh. Uh, the memory was provided showed approximately fifty, uh, two vehicles in the morning peak arriving and. Our fifty A arriving at fifty-two leaving in the morning peak hour. Knowing some kids don't arrive till later, so. Uh. Then in the evening, they showed approximately fifty-nine. Uh, vehicles leaving and fifty-one or three vehicles, uh. Uh, around, I think I did, in the peak hour, so obviously through the day, there's uh four vehicles coming and going. But, uh. So the number of vehicles anticipated in the peak hour is fairly minor and really will have a negative effect on the public infrastructure. So they have one access in and out, which seems very reasonable based on the the uh peak hour uh traffic is anticipated. So how? How many vehicles? I I hear what you're saying, but I have concerns about vehicles backing up. Onto the, um. Guess it would be to the north side of a hundred thirty third street. Kind of at the peak time. I understand about peak hour, my guess is that it's probably a peak thirty minutes. When a lot of children are arriving and that may also coincide with. Peak time admission trail. Do you have concerns about how will deal, whether there is an issue about traffic backing up on a hundred thirty third on the. Uh, westbound uh side or even the eastbound side, it's hard to make a left-hand turn.
Well, we we did not, based on that volume of traffic, uh. When you start getting into, say, two, two hundred vehicles in one entrance and a peak hour. That's where we might see more of a queuing effect, uh, and I'm not, uh. I know the applicant has a a traffic engineer did the study, they might actually be best, if they're, I don't know if they're available. They're on, but they might be best to, uh, respond. But, uh. Based on what staff is seeing, you don't anticipate fifty vehicles in an hour to create. Uh, any significant. Queuing on a hundred thirty third, you could have two or three cars, but we're only popping for a few seconds for that. And then you got three or four cars again, a couple of minutes later for a few seconds, as cars are. Entering and leaving, uh.
I guess the concern is that this is not a situation where. Like in a school where you're driving in, you're dropping a kid off, or. Sounds like a large part preschoolers, and so somebody's gonna have to park, or her mom, or dad, or custodian will have to get out, get them in. Sure, there's a security process, we're talking more than just a few seconds.
Right, when I say second, I'm talking not just that queue on a hundred and thirty third, as they're slowing down, maybe they're getting out. Uh, but really, their traffic engineer would probably be the best person to be able to describe how they analyze the queuing that occurs. Uh, but in the, in the uh, traffic study. They did not specifically describe the queuing that could occur on a hundred and thirty third street. And we did not ask if you could take some of the traffic off.
Mister Malanowski, can you comment at all? I realize you're probably that crap, you yourself.
When they did track to the U B A, like, we figured the original number of threats. It's just maybe. For a day or so, the size, uh, and what that does is go over a few thousand. Is there gonna be isolated times in there, it's hard to tell, uh, I mean, fifty cars, fifty car hours, it was not that many. Um, so I can actually, if they did not, it'd be like a five-minute stage, and then what if I have, you know, pull back, and run. While I have that, I don't know, there were five, so during my hour, you know, there were certain shoes to fund this. So I, I see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I I'm just concerned because I I know that there was, it was done to try to. Call a traffic admission trail, um, and all kinds of different approaches have been taken to try to. Figure out a way to get. Parents in and out, so I I do have concerns there, but thank you, Mister Arnold, you stepped back, Mister Malanowski. With that, we'll open up the floor to the comment discussion by the commission. Do missions to me first? Mister, Commissioner Law.
Uh, so I guess just to, uh, address the homeowner concern, I'm not, I don't know that it matters or not, I'm after which culs act, if he was sort of. Looks like there are two culs acts that back in this, this building. But, uh, and I don't know if this was about, I'm looking at two of the plans, first the aerial, it's C two one. This is the one with the trees on it, and then, um. L two, which I believe is the landscape plan. And and there seems to be kind of a void, I don't know if I'm, kind of a semi-circle. Just north of the building, I don't know if that's trees. Or not, it shows that I believe twenty-three, twenty-five little tree, um. Preservation area, I I guess I'm curious if if more, you know, if to Mister Malanowski's concern earlier about too many, too, too many trees. Throughout the property, more could be added to that north side, specifically evergreens, we talked about those. The support boards and other things that they dampened sound or deadened sound. Uh, if 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 more of a focus could be put on that north side, potentially with, uh, evergreens to, uh, help. Centralize. And I don't know if that's questions for the applicant or the staff, I, because I just, I'm having trouble understanding, you know, kind of what that. On my plan, it looks kind of like there's nothing, maybe in a semi-circle there on that north side, again, I'm not sure if that impacts. Directly the, the element that's still like, look to the north, or usually go back north to west, but. Uh, you know, I guess the effect would be done potentially along that four or five of the property.
Sure, and that that's something we can look at, but it is hard to kind of see on that area, but the arch trees that. Go with, uh, fill up that twenty-five stuff, preservation event. And then we just look at the landscape plan, they are planting. Junifers back there, and they are pretty tight. As well as some shrubs along the, uh. Of the base of the, uh, fascinating area for the playground. Uh, that's something we can take a look at, but. Have talked about parks department about that as well, uh, but. It does appear that it might be maxed out, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Can can staff speak to the issue that the applicant raised about the concentration trees that were stipulating each being included and. What survivability rate is with that kind of concentration trees?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, we have been working with the parks department's, uh, staff. They have reviewed this, reviewed the site, reviewed the landscape plan, uh. They have, uh, indicated a concern about the landscape plan as attempted, but as we move forward, you can take another look. And, uh. Uh, and see if there wouldn't be any other way, maybe. Uh, make it better, so that, uh, landscape can thrive. Uh, throughout the process, we did, uh, parks department, this is just other species. Maybe junifers or evergreens. Go around as wide. So that's gonna be something we need to look at. Replace some of these numbers up to make sure that.
So we'll have another chance to take a look at this when final comes through.
Right.
With respect to landscape.
Yeah.
Other comments? Commissioner Bellzer?
Um, I just. I'm a little bit confused, maybe you guys can work together to. And discuss. The age of the children in the building, based on this plan, it looks like infants through pre-k, um. Not elementary age, it's babies all the way through your pre-k. And the issue of the no more than twelve staff. At a time, if there's ten classrooms, I mean, I, as a former director of preschool, I can tell you that those ratios don't add up. With the number of children in each of these classrooms. There's ten classrooms. There's gonna be more than twelve staff at all times. Maybe not like first thing in the morning, you just start coming in, and last in the evening, when you start leaving, they combine classes, but during the day, with ten. Rooms and nine infants per room, there's gonna be a lot more than twelve staff.
And I want applicants to track that as well, I. During our process and our discussion, it's at fifteen. That's what I'm thinking, it might not be. Uh, but that's something I think you can address, hopefully tonight. And prior to, uh.
Yes, some classrooms are twenty more children. So that's.
Yeah, I don't know, and again, I I have to hear, uh, applicant interest, I don't know if the, uh. Committed. Uh, floor plan is actually for this, I don't know, maybe turn it from another.
Yeah.
Property, like something like to to address.
Yeah, I know, I I like, I'll see that. Word man. Mirrors what they're saying, which being.
And I guess what, were that impacted, if there is, if it finds a number of parking, it seems to be available, right, so. We had an additional. Significant number of employees that might create an issue with the site this time, but they had it for part of it, right?
Yeah, showing thirty spaces now, that was. Uh, well, maximum twenty.
But we'll have, we'll have the opportunity to look at that as well, assuming it's approved by the city council.
Yes.
When it comes back. Uh.
Commissioner Call, I was channeling with Commissioner here to, uh, a number of people on the stage who would like to see more clarity on that. Was, uh, I kind of went into it with a better thought and. Coming out with.
Commissioner Bullen.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, um. You know, it's funny that, um, the gentleman in Wilshire. Thought this was a pristine area, I had no idea, I did that. Say it a hundred times, and I knew it was picking up for another building in their spec, that's kind of amazing. Uh, the other thing was the number of daycares that we've proved in the last couple of years in this area, I think this is our fourth. Uh, within a mile of this area. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about over faturation, but. Um, I can definitely see the site. Being advantageous for a daycare. After having three kids go through Mission Trail, I can see you can do a nice little loop, drop the elementary kids off. Make a right turn on Mission Trail, head there, we're in the center, and you pop yourself. I'm sure that's what the applicant is thinking that as well, and so close to Mission Trail, it's gonna really help. Look down instead of. And then I do have concern from screenings with. The neighbors to the north. I know you guys are not considering discussions with the out, but I really want to make sure that the neighbors in Wilshire are. An adequate screening. To have a proper, so they don't have to walk out with that, and, and daycare. Sign the whole playground. I think it's good that, that you hold the playground to the hours of.
I think it's good that, that you hold the playground to the hours of, of, of study. To make sure that, obviously that's an absolute in this case, but I think that's important not to have. The kids out there too, too early in the morning for those neighbors.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McGurk.
I, I feel the same way, uh, that others do. I, I, I made a short list. And it probably doesn't include everything that I, I'm more concerned about now than I was when I walked in. So we've got the easement, we've got the trees, the sidewalks, the staff versus requirements. Uh, potential floor plan change, uh, and I, I'd ask the question about whether it needs to be two stories instead of one story. It'd probably be a lot less visible if it was one story. I don't know if the city was pushing for two, or if the applicant wanted to. But it'd probably be a lot less visible to the various homeowners if it, if it was one. Um, so there's a part of me that feels like this is fairly mature, or fairly, uh. Preliminary in its stage, I get that it's coming back to us, but it. Seems a little awkward to be sending it on when there's not a lot of significant questions yet to be answered.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner McGurk. Yes, Commissioner Steve, well, maybe to. Bag on to your comment and Commissioner Fulman's comment about the two store and the. False appearance, uh, with, with the, or just so you know, I know we're not approving. You know, building elevations, we are architecture at this point, but, you know, having these six. Large windows on the roof, apparently, that this false screening from. Uh, will, will be problematic in future. Future sentimental laws, uh, to where you can't do span. Have a wall, so, uh, you may need to see the. Think that through, that's fine. Final plan.
I guess I had a, a question. There was a, a dialogue between Commissioner Stevens and, and the applicant's representative about the parking. Especially the, um, accessible, accessible parking and the fencing, is there a need for us to put. A stipulation into that effect, or again, is that something that you would expect this to take up in a more. Detailed manner at the final plan?
There is a situation, uh, that it's a protective, you asked for a pedestrian plan and a B D A accessible route for that, with the final.
Great, thank you, thank you. Mark, I can see you for the first time tonight, uh, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I do, I think with the concern with regard to the number of employees on site, that's actually what we use to do the parking, uh, requirement. Um, that seems to me something that needs to really be, uh, figured out before it does move on. Um, I would recommend that this case be continued, uh, to allow that to be confirmed. Um, I think staff was, is under our understanding that there's gonna be fifteen employees, but it sounds like. Uh, there may be a, a change to that, and if there's a change to that, then there's gonna be a change, uh, to the number of parking spaces that's required. Which could affect the site, uh, quite a bit.
And I think that if the case was continued, there'd also be an opportunity to maybe address some of these other issues that have been raised. Uh, during the hearing season, uh, as well. Uh, other comments by the commission?
Well, if not, I'll, I'll ask if there's a motion, and it seems like we could have one of a couple of motions, we could have a motion. Direct demand for approval, we could have a motion to, to direct them in against approval, or we could have a, a motion to continue this matter. Uh, to a future date, so I will look to the commission, what the commission's legislature is. Commissioner Paul.
Chairman, um, I move to continue case fifty twenty three, children of Medicare. Plus approval of special use permit from their, from their flat, located on thirty third street, western Mission Road. Uh, to our next regular scheduled meeting, which is, uh, oh, uh, sorry, August twenty second.
And looking at staff, is that reasonable, given what's, what's on the calendar right now, if we take it to August twenty two?
Yes, yes, that should be fine.
Thank you. Is there a second, second, Commissioner McGurk, discussion of the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor continuing case number fifty dash twenty three. To August twenty second, uh, two thousand and twenty three, please indicate with say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same side, the ayes have it, and the case is unanimously continued, uh, to our next regularly scheduled, uh, meeting. The commission now calls case number sixty dash twenty three, uh. Know it's a little bit early, but I think that this case may take a bit of time. Should we take a break? Let's, let's, is there a motion? Is there a motion for recess?
Mr. Chairman, I move, I'm taking, uh, five minutes myself.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Paul, Mr. Second, thank you, Commissioner Wong, all those in favor, please indicate with say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, uh, we'll stand in recess for five to seven minutes. Thank you.
Uh, these phases will include thirty six brown building units, four buildings, three hundred twenty seven apartment music units, four buildings. Fourteen thousand six hundred eighty square feet of retail restaurant space, and nine thousand square feet of office space. Uh, and then remember, there is the one point seven six acre park, uh, relocated, uh, phase three. Uh, and other outdoor amenities such as dog parks and beauty gardens. Uh, there's also gonna be the four hundred foot, four hundred square foot retail kiosk, uh, and, uh, the thing part. Uh, the total number of units is three hundred and sixty three, uh, the third and fourth flats of East Village are also part of the application. Uh, changes on offensive coverage band were documented in the staff report, I won't go over all of them, but some of them were included. Uh, phase three, uh, there was a discussion about adding some kind of, uh, amenity to. Uh, the park in addition to the kiosks of the retail building, they added some terrace seating. Uh, to kind of give it a little, you know, amphitheater look, there was that amphitheater, the south seating there, given the, uh, layout of the land there. Uh, there was a reduction to the size of the park, that was due to, uh, needing larger curb, curbs, that was. Corners, uh, to accommodate emergency, uh, vehicles. And as I mentioned, uh, the number of units, it's thirty six, uh, the primary plan was forty, uh, so now we have, uh. Four last motions through that, uh, primary plan. Uh, for, for phase four, uh, they did add additional retail and restaurant curators, building A and E. Uh, they relocated by the biggest change, but they relocated between the pool, uh, primary plan. It was east of building D, in a, a grassy space area, now on, uh, rooftop of the garage of building D. Uh, they also located the dog park and beauty gardens, uh, east of building D, where, uh, cool used to be. Uh, also, uh, there were some, uh, parking spaces moved outside of the parking garages, and relocated on an internal trial, had service parking space. Uh, and then we've changed the traffic threshold, uh, the cable change. We can go back for, for phase three, a little more information on that, as mentioned before, there are thirty six, uh, units. Uh, there are four buildings, two eight unit buildings and two ten year buildings. Uh, the two ten year buildings also have retail, uh, space at the southern, southern ends. Uh, it's about two thousand five hundred thirty square feet of retail space, or commercial space. Uh, all the units that two state, uh, two state parks are. Uh, Treadmill Park, as mentioned before, is also part of the space. Uh, it'll have terrace seating, as well as that four hundred foot, we saw k, kiosks. At the southern, uh, part of that park, along with the seating areas around the retail. Uh, for this park, primary plan stipulated that the sidewalks around the park have a meet. Uh, I get the, uh, recommendations with one hundred thirty fifth street, we have the plan. Uh, the final plan does feature, uh, recommendations, uh, the applicant is providing eight foot sidewalks in this area, which we see. Uh, requirements are active possession trees, which are, uh, lifted in the one hundred thirty fifth street plan. Uh, for phase four, that includes four multifamily buildings, uh, four stories each. Uh, with seventy eights, eighty six, eighty six, and seventy seven units of each building. Each building will have a covered garage, and will provide at least one covered parking space, uh, per dwelling that's required by the O B L. Also, each, each building will have an outdoor amenity area, as mentioned before, building B will have that outdoor, uh, or, or utility pool. Uh, also, the applicant is getting the garage, is getting the garages, uh, E V ready, or. Uh, not only in addition, providing, uh, the table parking patient, uh, we will be providing conduit throughout the garages. In case mortification for. Uh we will be providing conduit throughout the garages in case mortification are needed in the future. Uh phase four also includes that dog park and community uh gardens areas, uh as mentioned before. Uh third flat has one tracks and the right way along into the thirty-fifth streets. And the fourth flat has one lot as well as uh as well as right away along one hundred thirty-first streets. Uh for the parking, the plan shows seven hundred and ninety-eight parking spaces, both surface and indoor garage. Uh when nine hundred, uh seven hundred and ninety-seven are required, so the R M E uh parking space required in one one. Uh as you saw on the staff report, the applicant is proposing to land bank. Uh eighty parking spaces, that means uh gotta be left as free space. And if it's determined later by city staff that those parking spaces are needed, uh they can come back and uh pay those pay those parking spaces. It is important to mention that uh that gray space that is covered by the land bank parking spaces. Uh that does not count for the open space number that you're speaking in the staff report. Because in the future, those could be paid and then uh cease to be uh open space. Uh the design guidelines were submitted for phase one and phase two, buildings and these states will follow uh those guidelines, including people struggling with brick, stones, eventually stucco and and glass. Uh the colors will all complement uh uh phase one and phase two buildings as well. Uh and the retail kiosks also be built of the same materials. Uh landscape and life plans have been submitted and meet all the requirements of the L D O. Uh as for deviations, uh they were granted reduced building setbacks, uh forty to thirty feet. Uh mostly along that hundred thirty first, uh hundred thirty-fifth street, and they're also uh branded at zero foot interior setup. Also, you should have got that on your seat, at your seat a memo, it's uh regarding the situation is fixed. Uh we had some discussions with uh the applicants. Uh they felt that the way it was written, it's been bred that no certificate of occupancy could be uh could be granted until all buildings were built and all buildings were built, uh solar ready, of course, that wasn't uh staff's intention, so uh building A is built and the solar conduits and everything else into making solar ready. Of course, they didn't get it's uh certificate of occupancy, so we we hope that uh by changing it with either one or two uh make it more clear that each is a visual building, its own building, it has its own certificate of occupancy. And also clarifies that uh solar ready only applies to four story apartment buildings and not grounds. That is recommending approve uh approval of case sixty-nine twenty-three as stipulated in the staff report, if the applicant answered any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, just one, we're looking at phase three and phase four here, at at the end of the day, net net, is there any change in the total number of residential units?
I believe it went down one, uh they lost four brown building units and gained three apartments.
What about relative to the apparent all of the phases one and two?
There's one and two, I would have the applicant just add one, but uh see if I have that on my report as well.
And again, there were a lot of different numbers in here, but at the end of the day, is there a net increase in commercial uh space or or spaces dedicated to commercial activities?
There is and I've that written down. And I can get that for you real quick, oh, it's increased by four thousand two hundred ninety square feet.
And I believe that's restaurant and it intended to be restaurants based, correct?
Correct, okay.
Thank you. Questions for that? I'll look down this way to start. Commissioner McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick reference, you went through a a good list of changes that had occurred. Did that include the changes that came from the canceled meeting a couple of weeks ago to tonight? That whatever the reasoning was for the cancellation?
Yes.
That material and is, was that on the list?
Yeah, yeah, it's uh really wasn't a change, it was still got big writing first, uh we wanted to make sure that we had the right data in place, so it really wasn't a change to be announced.
Okay, just having gone through the packet for the previous meeting, gone through this packet, there was nowhere in here that indicated what that change was.
Yeah, so there was no change in the plan, it was just going over numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bill.
Um people kind of asked this before, but I don't really remember the answer, so forgive me. Um how did the Chadwick Park and the kiosk square footage of the whole area compare to our base?
Yeah, I do not have the answer to it, and he's saying compared to park place in terms of square footage.
It's great, I just need a visual, I I'm not good with, yeah, like acreage.
Yeah, you know, I think.
Space and and the kiosk, like, I'm completely.
Yeah.
Small. Kiosk.
Square, yeah.
Is for skating rentals, not really retail, and it's a pretty small space, so I'm just curious how, I I'm a visual person.
Sure.
Seeing it on a piece of paper doesn't, I I need like a spatial comparison.
And I was giving more, I thought we had a suspicion in one of our meetings, when the applicant about not not remembering uh the numbers, so marking it off the top of your head with the acres between that plaza and park place and and Chadwick Park.
I don't know as far as Berkeley, I think you're referring to Berkeley Square, is that right, within Park Place? Um let's look at where the skating rink and all that kind of thing is.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And I I would, let me see if we can come up with some information on that um and get back to you. I believe that this is quite a bit larger, but um let let me get back to you.
And Park Place is where the skating, because that's where.
I think it's called.
Correct, I believe, I believe that this area is much larger than that, but I'll I'll confirm.
It 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 depends, yeah, just how how much larger, we try to find that out for you.
Okay, great, thank you. I think I have to put one if you can't remember the answer, so we'll deal.
Yeah.
Um and I have a question about the parking, I'm on a roll with partners, like, um. So it says here that submit plan show seven hundred and ninety-eight spaces, which means the requirement. However, eighty of those are to be land banked, so this is really the number of parking spaces, seven hundred and eighteen. We don't really have seven hundred and ninety-eight physical slots, it's really seven hundred and eighteen, and at seven hundred and eighteen, is that meeting the L D O requirement?
Well, we consider uh two, you know, the requirement, because that space is dedicated for future parking. They can't use for anything else, like a sidewalk in there and get the trail or anything else, but that's for a park, so while we land bank uh an area for the parking spaces, those scout towards uh the required one. Especially because uh that stipulate those city, the city economy addressing that, and that obviously was parking needs for those who in turn into parking spaces.
Okay, so we can't, then they can't come back to us and say, oh, we now want to use this space for something else.
Uh they they could probably try and go back with revised plan, but. Follow. Good for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Block.
No, a huge short question, so I believe, uh my I my first question had to do with the parking as well, I I where is the plan to park the man that we backed for parking, I wasn't clear. Uh they're kind of all over, I think a lot of them are on that internal drive. Uh let me, I guess, I just thought maybe one of these kind of big squares, but.
You know, let's spread out.
Yeah, but they're kind of somewhat in the parking space and uh parking areas as well. Okay, um and then I guess then my question was kind of logistics of that, okay, so if there's a a need, and I know we approved bank parking and and other projects, but so so you know, this one's just kind of large, so I guess it gives more like mind, it's their obvious work, but so if the need is there, becomes there, so so now people don't have place to park. You know, then they gotta go out to bids, and they gotta have something to continue to work, and you know, so it could take months or a better part of a year on testing to to actually create these spots like that, I don't know if that's accurate, that's just how I guess I would see it, is that is that concerning you that, you know, if they need this, if it creates an issue, or you know, extend it during time for the control?
Yeah, that that's that's a good question, I think we hope that we start seeing the issue early, yeah, I don't think it'll take months. Uh I don't know, Mark, you can address, address this uh the type of application that they would need uh to move forward, would just be a building for an application to to build as parking spaces.
To develop the parking spaces, actually, what you'd be approving with this application is as far as the uh land bank parking spaces shown as parking, so really, you you should look at this this site plan as including parking where those land bank parking spaces are. Generally, the city has always tried to avoid paving over things that weren't really made needed. Uh in this case, and what happened in other applications, is that if the developer indicated that they didn't need those parking spaces, that really all they would do was end up paving additional land. Uh the city's always been supportive as far of land baking those parking spaces. Uh however, the caveat which Dan kind of went over, they're dedicated to those parking spaces, they can't come back and and say that, no, we aren't going to uh, we want to use it for something else, uh because it's being used as far as for their their parking counts.
And and Mark, if the city decide that those spaces are needed, uh what would the application process be?
We, they they could come back to the building permit and install those, if you would prefer that they come back to the planning commission, city council. Uh we can actually add that to the stipulation that uh if the parking spaces are needed, uh they'll come back to the planning commission and city council. And um I wouldn't have any issues with that.
Yeah, it sounds like Christian block, but we are working straight about time, so. Yeah, I I was the opposite of not trying to make it more difficult, start under the management, if the needs there, you know, how how hard is the process to actually? Yeah, so the answer, I can leave the uh to the building part. In general, I don't want to speak for them, I that's something hopefully we need to keep track of knowing that was an issue. Um not to reason that that application was submitted. Thanks, and then I have to one. Right, well, uh so uh similar to my, from the last case, on the E V garden, I know that you can't go have, I think it's ten spots throughout uh Hootley Garden. I mean, not having it in the L D O, I mean, I I guess probably you feel about that being sufficient. Uh you know, there's a lot of apartments, I actually mean the town, the town owns to be pre uh wired for them or pre ready, ready for that. Um but but I guess, how do you determine, you know, that that she was not a good girl?
Yeah, it is when it came from cases, of course, if we could, we we prefer more, but as you mentioned, it's not. And the L D O and uh applicant is uh like agreeable enough to to uh include those uh as part of the challenge, yeah. I I think, and I'll let I'll let them adjust as long as as electric cars become more and more common, that's something I think the locals would be willing to uh to put in, uh and also they were very grateful to make the comment within the garages. So that's that's quite a few spaces that uh would be very easily converted to uh E V charging stations. And I'm sure the applicant might ask your question as well.
Great, uh then moving on to another, um the I think there was a a reference to about thirty-three percent of the when at least in these two phases, I think it was these two phases, maybe it's whole project, but uh always dedicated open space. And I know there were some questions in earlier burdens that we've seen of this, is that, does that include parking mediums, does that include wet and dry retention basins, you know, what what is that, what what is that particularly for some of that?
It includes all green area and mark uh coming out green area, it does include the the texture bases as well, the parking lot islands. Um Mark, am I missing anything?
Yeah, yeah, correct, I mean, it basically is everything that's pervious, uh so it allows the the rain to soak through.
So that would would be said parking mediums and things like that, correct? Okay, then my last, uh it is uh Specter LeBryan, and this is on the uh on your memo, it just wasn't clear to me. It's on the first page of your memo, uh to Mark, uh on your traffic impact analysis, uh the loss of access to one hundred thirty-third Chadwick. I I I probably understand what that is, I I don't know, so which is is commenting as a reference to uh several changes that were made at council after the planning commission uh heard the preliminary plan. That including uh removing Chadwick from uh at vehicular car from accessing one hundred thirty-third street. So that Chadwick alone was approved to one hundred thirty-third street. And so we asked them to update their current study, like redistributing the traffic to ensure we weren't causing detrimental uh level of service at the other uh access points, and they've done that, uh so actually this seems the memo written. They've actually provided uh an update and study and have addressed these comments. And then Chadwick is the one that go straight through, through that, yeah, it doesn't go through. This one, so on the other side of the plaza area, but more that that doesn't connect on.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and the other was on that same memo though, and I understand there was, I was just trying to understand this though, uh was the uh referencing roundabout, the intersection path and the internal east west road and church drive. And I'll see a roundabout if. Right, so uh that was not included in their initial plan, and they have asked about coming back with an alternative intersection design and works and the applicant work together and creating a roundabout might be a reasonable option. So they've evaluated that, provided us a memo explaining how that would uh benefit the traffic through there. Part of the issue is we have uh uh an offset with the church drive it versus east west access, and then all of the drive or traffic goes south to one hundred thirty-fifth from that terminal route. Uh so the roundabout, it's more efficiently um serve the traffic that that uh use, utilize the side angle intersecting. So they are going to utilize roundabout set, they are wanting to use a a term around about that would be private. In terms of yourself. And and that's, and then just for my variance, so that's in the very southeast corner. Correct, it would serve the commercials uh phases five and six. Uh but they do, are they are required to structure dependent road uh access point that they have. And so and and so that's, that intersection is on our map in this package, but that roundabout is not shown. That roundabout is not shown, that was a request, staff is recently, they they analyzed it and provided a memo uh that's about it.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Colvin.
Can you talk about any of the uh the vegetation that they looked at here as the, you're replacing land with a lot of buildings? Uh particularly as maybe length of water usage, uh native trees and such things as that, heat island decks?
Uh of course, we don't have a answer for that, if we could look into it for you if you'd like. Uh so you want to know about, when you talk water usage, you talk about the park park buildings and.
I'm thinking of the vegetation, you know, you've seen uh neighborhoods put in some wonderful river birds. Uh and there's a river at least five miles away.
The applicant may go ahead.
Yeah.
And or information.
Yeah, the applicant addressed them. Anyway, it's in the staff, but uh you can also talk with our parks department, see what answers they have to to address that. Not just for this, but maybe for future ones as well.
Commissioner Colvin, okay, thank you. Commissioner Colvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hernandez, I I noticed that um there's no correspondence from the public in regards to this case, did we not, did you not receive any emails, phone calls or anything?
I I did, I did not personally receive anything, I know uh uh Mark reached out to some of the neighbors, letting them know when the final plan was coming through. I'll let Mark uh tell you if he can see that in correspondence or anything like that.
Some of the neighbors had asked with regard to this application, and we did notify them that it that it was coming. Um and so I have not received any, any um any letters or emails uh with regard to the uh application, and I don't think that Dan has either. However, they do have the ability to speak at the governing body meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Colvin.
I, I'm, Commissioner Block? One one last question, I call this, uh on the E V, I just never read my notes, uh. I I know on the next case we have, uh you talked about, or you asked for knock boxes on E V chargers. Uh the fire department, I guess, did, I should say, why is that not addressed in here, I guess, there was different here than the same startup? Let me tell you, I I am not familiar with the knock boxes, but my party department did introduce this. Uh they just uh, they they were looking for a shut off at the E V charger, uh that on the morning start going, and knowing that the user would spread out on the property, I don't know. How that, and and maybe it's something that developers already addressed and give it out. How that and and maybe it's something that developers already addressed and give it out.
Yeah, and the local may be addressed that we've been on to talk with our fire department too, if something needs to change, fires and something in mind. Uh we would ask something interesting for the signature, thank you.
Uh Mr. Spogel, I guess I have a question uh hurting back to the discussion about the roundabout. What phase would the roundabout be acceptable? Is it part of this, is it part of phase three and phase four, or is it? And I can certainly ask the applicant that as well and see what their plan is.
So they uh. Just reviewing my memo here because it's sensitive and long uh. Hundred thirty-fifth and Chadwick is being constructed, one hundred thirty-fifth street, the white freeways. They could construct a right turn lane along one hundred thirty-fifth for the right and right out. Traffic related improvements to see what happened. I don't see it on phase three before I have this tech to see if it was included or required at phase one.
Yeah, I'll I'll ask the applicant. Any other questions with that? If not.
Chair, sorry, I interrupted, we do have an answer for uh. Mister Belzer, uh birthday park, the park place is point three acres. Chadwick Park, one point seven, a little over, so it'll be about six times bigger than.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward, Mr. Odo, Mr. Holland, who's speaking for the village tonight. Ah, welcome back, if you could state your name and and address for the record, welcome back to the commission.
Thank you very much. Patrick Greer, Florida Art Institute, eight eight one three, kind of the line, Fox, canvas. Uh behalf of.
And Patrick, I would ask again, I know it's been a while since we started, but. We're without mics tonight, so if you could speak up uh for our folks that are on the Zoom call, we'd be great.
Yeah, no problem. Uh so my PowerPoint key up here and. So as Dan mentioned, we're talking about phase three and four on the screen here. Uh you can see this is in the southeast corner about when phase four buildings here are at phase four. And then the four brownstone buildings around China are are phase three. The just with our current file of the plan, the green hash area that would be previously approved, phase one and two. Final development plan, uh as you can see, that does include that uh northbound uh portion of the development where Chadwick was come off at city council. Uh so part of this application we're requesting is just the southeast corner uh with a phase of five and six, it will be. Uh so quick comparison of the side by side of the final development plan on the right, the lumbering on the left. Overall, the product plan, hundred percent compliant with the L E O. Uh there's a few minor changes that Dan went through, uh road sizing and access updated for fire urgency compliance. It was around China park and throughout uh development. Um building C, the surface lot in the preliminary was shifted over a little bit to both of the brownstones. That's just for proximity, wrong building and mid for emergency access. Uh a few of the improvements in the preliminary plan that we make the basis even better to file without. Uh basically, overall, the site plan of this phase only is changed and saying with one less unit. Uh overall, uh you guys are questioning uh about the overall number of units. Uh phase one and two, we had lost ten units from the overall D P group number. Uh so right now we're minus eleven units total for the original. As Dan mentioned as well, in buildings A and B, we also went through and increased the number of retail restaurants for footage. Again, that was something we heard kind of throughout this entire uh problem is putting this that use into the problem where we can, where we feel it's going to be most successful. And along home, it'd be a great opportunity for us to uh application. Uh the public park, uh next to building B, that encompasses uh what was previously about three acres. And the P P has grown to three point one seven. Uh so we're able to increase in that area uh by shifting access drive into the parking garage. So no longer by the single panel phone, especially access uh along. Uh so moving that away from the single panel, it also allows create more space. Uh probably the biggest change was taking the pool, which was previously shown right here. That is now the dog park and community garden, so getting more contiguous green space. Uh pool itself, uh moved on top of the parking garage for building B. So uh that would be a great move to conserve green space, so you already have on top of the parking deck, that's not going to be green, so. And then lastly, I'm just gonna quickly touch on some of the landing stalls, there were a few questions. Uh right now, we're required seven hundred ninety-seven, overall, site plan is planned to house seven hundred ninety-eight. Eight of those, again, being the first or upper areas um. Number of which are along one hundred thirty-four here and a few larger green islands. Um here, so all the sidewalks that would be needed, those go in already followed seven feet, so. It's just a matter of somebody for a site development permanent and then finding in and pay about the room and prepaid. Uh we went the often landbaking, yeah, our name's called for two cars per unit for apartments. And you can see probably say we'll have one point three cars, one point three five. Uh so again, we don't anticipate any, we'd rather have more green. And really quick, just to show you some uh quick visuals of the project, walk through some of the renderings. Uh put together so you can put overall site line, give you a general idea of where we show you views from. Where we start off on one hundred thirty-fifth street here, we now progress north through Chadwick and take it with the China park. And then we're gonna hop on over to the mixed use building uh A, and I'll show you a view of what that what that looks like on top of the garage. Uh so this is the view you can see coming out one hundred thirty-fifth and Chadwick, so one hundred thirty-fifth street, the screen left. And then Chadwick Park, maybe beyond, since the buildings. Uh F and G, which have their sidewalks and empty space and then the uh brownstone units and buildings supporting here. Again, materials and design very similar and uh just the setup's all approved for the phase two, rest of so. Uh as we progress, this is an area we'll kind of look down over Chadwick Park along that entry. So we have our uh our landscape and signage here, rendering to the project. Uh planning on some burns and land station cutting in, so that way you can kind of like start coming in off of traffic off Chadwick uh block after the part beyond. You can see that resale, yeah, it's type of building there. I can side angle of the shadow and start to kind of give you a sense of the street state that you have now through the front of brownstone buildings. Also, I see that I can see it beyond. Six three, there's I want to do the offer right here, you can kind of see some of the patios. So those would be the resale restaurant areas that are part of those two brownstone units on the south side there, building final J. And then as Dan mentioned, this is our eight foot uh plank bed with eight foot sidewalks. Doing seven theaters, I guess, including um that sidewalk and the pack, portion of the patios of brass. Chadwick Park itself, um so one of the improvements we made on top of the lumbering was adding in this firm up. Areas to have some built with seating, uh so that is kind of, you know, theater in the park. Type seven, if you will, and some burning around there for dead malls. Uh the chaos building here is anticipated um to really be used as some progressions in there, obviously. And also stuffs and set up for a catering kitchen, so that way depending on what event might be happening in Chadwick Park that night. Uh they can have different vendors kind of swap out, set up their stuff and serve. Uh so the access on both the south side, the east side and the north side of that, uh so wherever you are in the park, you can access it. And then the restaurants again are over here, along the left, there's free hall, that part of that, so like you played, it's it's all spring. Uh you're building city like everywhere in the patients, so if you're open play, you see football will be along with this for current supplies. Uh so our kind of part overall is about a hundred feet longer than a standard football. Uh a little bit. Uh this is the rendering of the mixed use building, long ground well here is the friendly commune, see the retail restaurant office, commercial space. Uh where you have the temple for a lot of patio, uh by the restaurant. Above that is three stories of apartments and then beyond is kind of the parking garage back behind this. And then four story living. Again, material will load all the time, uh basically the backside is view, shit looking final, should have supported. Uh so this is the view looking here above building B, looking back towards Pawnee. So what we did is we took the pool, put it on top of parking deck, so you can kind of see some of the open air, uh you know, breaks. Here on the side and we actually did building B and pushed it down and the ground a little bit. And what we were able to do then on the west side is firm up, so you can actually get a sidewalk access that can go up a very slow eighty-eight and five. Run from the public right way to that pool. So the users of the brownstones, apartments and the single panel homes would have access to this. And so that way, the parking stalls that are along under thirty-four street, you can park there. Uh we can then cross while I go up the ramp, you're right. Uh few the two things that we'd like to discuss tonight. Uh one of them being the right in portion of the right in, right out along one hundred thirty-fifth street. Uh the part of the uh draft memo that we submitted, uh there is a recommendation uh to remove the right in. Portion of this only, so what we're proposing is the right out wouldn't remain. Uh we have for, you know, mercy and then access back on one hundred thirty-fifth. Uh but the traffic study and the business note that being the hot law of the traffic along one hundred thirty-fifth street. Due to the proximity of this right in being so close between where the Chadwick area differences and where Pawnee is. Uh actually, if they determined to traffic in this area for those reasons, the site right eight was. This determination is not very. Uh so what we did, it was a request of uh staff that would be shown, we do not feel that is part of the. Uh I'm gonna skip over stipulation number six because we are in agreement with the memo that Dan circulated, so ignore that for the slide. That's a last minute uh thing. Uh one stipulation that we did want to bring up is number seventeen. Uh some of the base wanted to, we're proposing the removal of this stipulation in regards to the uh enclosed downfall of the building. Again, uh it unnecessarily introduces water back into the building uh which. Cause of thermal rot and mold issues, uh downspouts on the buildings will be on the rear and will be artificially integrated. And with that, I appreciate all your time, uh staff's time looking at this application um. And really excited to bring this uh work and development for you guys and with Chadwick Park, I'm really starting to flush out, because I was. Really getting to create that center of place that is unique to the world and all of these. So uh with that, so that was the end, but.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, this question's for the applicant. See men to the right, to the left, Mr. Block.
All right, I'll start with um I I thought that the property ownership had already changed from Ramir to Odo, did that not happen? At least I was looking at the applicant and says property's open by.
Four more months.
Um and then the next is uh timing to start, I think the last thing was out there, at least that I was aware of, that. Uh construction started this summer and then this is probably referring to the phase one I passed, so maybe. Help me understand what the timing of all this would be potentially?
Yeah, um so phase one uh is currently under development, looking at uh some of the CDs and getting some. So step one is one of those, lots of years old, that kind of creates the initial plumbing mechanism to start um. Given their face, two, three or four, um most likely phase three would probably come right after that, just flush out Chadwick Park and brownstone. Um again, it kind of all relates to where in, sure it started falling in the market, but currently anticipated development. Is one and then either two or three, depending on timing and then probably.
And so when is that by the calendar, when do you see that, still this year, is this coming up now?
I would have to start where they're at, doing, I've done the part.
Um and then I guess then my next question uh deals with the reason for more retail, you mentioned that I I think it was maybe just because you said it earlier. Comments and people wanting more retail, I'm just curious if there's been interest uh from retailers in general. Created or restaurateurs or?
Yeah, um and working with great on this, um you know, we've had interest now that the fundamental improved in five for one two. On not only retailers for this portion of the site, but also future five and six, so. We're hoping that application is coming soon, but there is a number of users that um. The retail that increased, so like sixty-five seventy-two is more standard, we're able to cater to more uh retailers. So while I can't say, I think we do have interest for some of these buildings. Uh mostly, so far, I think they've got a lot of up for the table.
Uh and then I think my last question for now, uh you you mentioned that the bank parking would be room space or or. Ranscape in some form or fashion initially, so what what do you think the timing potentially would be if that's needed? You know, I guess was I, it could be, you know, months or a better part of a year to to do that, or is it something just happens quickly if needed?
Um in terms of timing, just because all of the street work is there and we're all, this is taking out a curve, we can like see it forming a new curve and form asphalt. Obviously, asphalt is more dependent, but that's probably no longer than that part of the law, the lack of you determine it. So it's pretty much, you're talking a lot of, you know, builders would spend. Asphalt would take very long, but that's a, you can't do that kind of thing.
And I guess how would you know that that need, I mean, do you think the city would come to you or you will come to the, I mean, I know this is kind of in the future, but I guess. How is a need going to be determined as to, you know, are you, you know, wanting to put more parking potentially and quickly to to alleviate? These concerns or or would you?
Yeah, I think um either mechanism would be how how they come about, you know, if uh you have residents, obviously, and these want to have their parking space and be able to park. So obviously, if the leasing staff is getting, say, we can't find parking. Or Chadwick Park, if that's below a way more of a lot, would it be, and we have parking, then you know, we want to have a successful development and under parking something is better. Um so I think any either or, depending on that.
Yeah, because I guess everybody said earlier, it wasn't so clear to me where these bank spots were, but I mean, if there are car shows or events in this area. I guess, you know, you're assuming that most of the people are gonna walk from here, or maybe people from the north or the south.
Yeah, we. Yeah, well, all the developments, so it's it's a density here, uh it's a disallowing community and so we would hope that, you know, a lot of the residents. Do a lot of new change that uh entered Chadwick, right, eight, it was three to a walking path, you know, those residents more would make the walk as well. And obviously, everyone within this fell, we do have a walk as well. Um and because we've only ended up land baking eighty stalls and even two stalls per gives. Um and landing eighty three, only by one point three, so providing anything at this point would we really need. And part of it is to counter the, uh to be the, you know, be parking to the pool, parking, use those two parks and for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Block, Commissioner Holden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um obviously, the apartments are are gonna be left, so what about our house, if you have an objection?
Those are a hundred percent.
Um with the apartments, just. I'm not a real estate, but I look around and there are just tons of apartments going everywhere. I'm concerned about oversaturation in market. What what do you see from your expertise and rules to bear in terms of of apartment methods right now?
Um from a real estate perspective, that's a positive type of architecture, we've worked with a number of different developers and uh we. Seated a bunch of our articles, um you know, that we've seen stuff that has been made in the numbers, we started with kind of over side, very impressive. But some of market studies, she'll still show that they can consider Johnson County market as having a. And yeah, and so obviously, we see a ton of different development all over Johnson County and in the area, uh so falls for apartments. And you know, as these buildings open, we're seeing a very high volume of leases being signed uh for we. So I would say that, you know, we wouldn't build something that wasn't needed, uh it's not good business and. Uh all the market studies today, uh still show that it's a good.
What are your ranges for for that?
Um, I don't know if that's been finalized based on the square footage, where you can around two dollars square foot. And, you know, the average nine hundreds, probably, you know, probably looking at about eighteen hundred is starting for one bed. Two beds, there are a few penthouses, maybe two or more, probably about twenty two hundred, twenty three for two beds.
And then just, I'm a parking, you know, obviously, and thank you for putting, you know, the chief's field, field's perspective and how big this area is. Um, when you have a velster, vans or, or whatever, where are these people wanting to park? And how much capacity do you have? If you have, how much extra parking is on the site that you can handle something like this?
Uh, I don't know if I have an exact number of extra parking onsite. Um, I will say that some of the parallel stall around it, we plan for the parking that would be pressed. And, uh, I think it would also depend on the type of event and what that draw potentially could be. So, um, but with this, this cross park, we can not just pay three four, but they want to directly adjacent. You know, if there is, whether they are private streets or there is some concrete apartment that needs to occur, you know, larger, thus there is space. Plan for that within this portion of the development. Um, but overall, just because we didn't land bang all stalls, I think we need to have like a one, one through five or even number. I think we're going to be at a part of this.
Even structure that's started and go on. I'm, I'm thinking the van at one end, the van theater going off and then just, you know, lots of people just, just flying bits or, or moving everything down.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bulle. Other questions? Uh, I guess I've got a few. First, starting off, if I wrote my notes correctly, it sounds like there are currently two stipulations at issue. One is a right in, right out, and the other one has to do with the downspouts.
Uh, correct, I'm not sure the right, I'm, I'm stating stipulation.
I'm not sure, I saw it as stipulated either way. I didn't see a number like that. But those are the two outstanding issues, correct?
Correct, yes.
Uh, and do you or your client have any objections to any of the other stipulations that are included in the proposal?
None, I don't have any.
Looks like Mr. Holland's heading up your direction, so.
I, I understand that in the right hand stipulation is part of public works memo. Okay, so if you look at public works memo, you'll see it.
Um. So we had some discussion, uh, with the staff around this idea of a traffic circle. And it wasn't entirely clear if or when, I guess it was good because at least as I understood it, the applicant was proposing that. It wasn't sort of me in, in what phase it might take place. Could you enlighten me?
Yes, I'm looking at other, uh, similar engineers. And so because, uh, the extent of the patent was approved, we can build this part of phase two, uh, we're going to.
And you have an approved phase two final plan, correct?
Correct.
So are you going to need to modify the, the final plan in order to accomplish that? The will with staff required in the council, they're related to the park. Asking that can be an administrative, uh, approval or that we need to back thirty. Marty, there are no one on your right. You don't have a choice to look down.
Oh, it looks like you are on the listening, probably.
Uh, so, uh, phase, phase two requires, uh, the internal grounds associated with phase two to be, uh. Public works is where the wooden boat were to identify alternative intersection design associated with the phase two. And, uh, the roundabout and the question is if that is, if we need to bring that forward as an amendment? Or if that can be an extreme revision?
I don't.
Okay, and I'm not going to hold you to it. I was just trying to get a sense of.
I haven't seen it. Oh.
That's not. You're quite familiar with the place, so I know that a lot. Uh, I might let you step back quite a bit. Mr. Stogel, can you comment on your perspective on the elimination of the right in?
Uh, sure. So, uh, a little background on that, uh. So at the, uh, December sixth council meeting, the mayor has stated that hundred thirty third street was a concern in almost every detail she read. And in fact, maybe she asked if there was a way to force more traffic onto one hundred thirty fifth and have a right in, right out. Uh, and I don't want to put words in your own mouth, but I believe you spotted something to the effect, it would be that if it created a benefit to the traffic. Uh, they have evaluated the, uh, traffic and, well, it doesn't necessarily, I'm going to pull up their memo here. Um. It, it does say that the right in, right out will not cause a problem. And. Says the movement's projected to operate at a little surface heat, which is not very, during the morning rush hour. But that is associated with an exit to the right out. Right out is required regardless because of, uh, urgency response and play. So the, uh, the poor operation at this intersection isn't associated with the right. The right angles need to operate reasonably well, uh, regardless of the, uh, pouring feedback. Uh, the drivers, if they do have difficulty exiting at the right out during morning, they are, which often occurs at a stop control. It takes a two way heavy, uh, or high traffic volume material. They do have alternative exit points, so there's no anticipated, uh, increase in delay or, uh, with the, the overall. Uh, so this is from their traffic study and, uh. Which they reference at that site right eight along hundred thirty third street. The staff agrees that this is not a fair to creating traffic method, the right end. On the other hand, it is anticipated that, uh, this, the council is expecting this and the mayor did ask that this be considered and evaluated. So, um, staff has taken a position, a stance that this should be included in the, in, uh. Yeah, the, uh, proposal for file.
What, what is staff's view with, I mean, obviously, say the history of this is that. The neighbors and the city council are looking for a reduction in traffic if possible on hundred thirty third street. What's your view, what's staff's view about whether taking out the right in would force traffic back to?
Based on their traffic engineers report, it does not appear that their analysis shows any significant intervention a lot of hundred thirty fifth.
What about increase? If you take out, if you take out the right in, as I understand, the purpose was to reduce the volume on hundred thirty third. Taking away the right in, will that increase the volume on hundred thirty third street?
So we had previously analyzed the book, the hundred thirty third street with, uh, with no right in or right out. And when we added the right in, it did not improve or, or it didn't create any negative, any significant impacts to a hundred and thirty third street. Most of the traffic that we utilize on the right end and right out will likely be utilizing Pawnee or Chadwick.
So the corral area is if you take out the right end, it's not going. You're putting it in did not decrease, taking it out is not going to increase trajectory. Uh, Ms. Roto.
Yeah, if I can add a little.
You can state your name and address, please.
Uh, we call it two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Um, like he's like, 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 as you said, we, we said we would have a feeling if, if it showed that it would improve. Um, be contracted less than that, I knew at times in my experiments in the background where they would. Like getting a signal right at Chadwick, two hundred yards to the east and another signal, uh, right at Pawnee, two hundred yards to the west. Track again, there's no traffic change whatsoever for positive days on the, the people here going in on. There is no correlation to it. And if you look at that site, the intersection where I, this is my setup, uh, is a single one. You just feel like you don't need another traction requirement for downing of this street. But this, uh, so this is why.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roto.
Thank you.
Um. Mr. Royder, just refresh me, you, you made a reference to it, I think you understand, but having taken out the northern, the. Part of Chadwick that was north of Chadwick Park, what goes in that space now?
Uh, there's green area.
So this was additional green area that, that.
Uh, yeah, that was.
Um. Now, there was a reference in our packet, and I'm not going to be able to find very quickly, I'm sure, um. About that the preliminary plan called for eight foot sidewalks. And I realize if you're leaving eight foot sidewalks, but I thought there was a reference to some of the sidewalks being reduced to six feet. Am I, am I imagining that or can you speak to why reducing the, the width of sidewalk that from eight to six feet?
Um, I don't know if any sidewalks were reduced from eight to six feet. We have eight foot sidewalks around Chadwick and, uh, on the outside, there's a six people on the interior of Chadwick Park. So the parallel stalls which are in the area. All the other sidewalks are either, uh, five or seven feet depending on if they're, uh, park involved backing up them or not. Or the, uh, eight feet part of the retail places. I'm not aware of any others to miss, but what have they named?
Yeah, and I did find the reference. It's, it's said that, uh, and I'm quoting from our case that's been presented as the applicant is proposing sidewalks around the park area. Include eight feet wide blocks in front of the brownstones and eight feet wide plank areas. A six foot wide sidewalk is also proposed for around the perimeter of the park. The preliminary plan stipulated sidewalks in the area meet the recommendations of a hundred thirty fifth street community plan. Which includes eight foot wide sidewalks for active pedestrian streets.
So the, um, pedestrian, so the community plan shows eight foot sidewalks for active pedestrian streets are defined as. Uses on both sides of the street, then the actual street and that green space. And then the community plan has sidewalk shown in that internal green space. So if you're looking at Chadwick Park and that section of the street as a whole, Chadwick Park comes with that green space. Never had any typical sidewalks in there as part of that orientation.
So your view would be that the six foot sidewalk is, and this is the complication, is consistent with the hundred thirty fifth street community plan?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interject.
Let, let me, that's probably random, my question is the, I will say. He answers the answer. Okay, Dan?
Yeah, uh, the, uh. I'm sorry, I have a text from Mark. Uh, the, uh, active pedestrian sidewalks only apply to the sidewalks in front of the brownstones. For people who walk, uh, the applicant proposed a six foot sidewalk to the interior of the, uh. Of the, of the park to accommodate the people around the park and around the park for food trucks. My staff did not feel that the hundred thirty fifth street can apply to that, uh, because we didn't want another two feet increases. And take it a lot of, and the act, and again, the act that's only applied to, uh, those sidewalks and part of the brownstone.
So you would agree with Mr. Royder, like, six foot sidewalk in this particular location is consistent with the hundred thirty fifth street plan? Okay, thank you. All right, and then Mr. Fernandez, I guess I would look to you, this is the discussion we've had repeatedly for a number of applicants. About the question of the, uh, internal downspouts. What, what is staff's, uh, view? And, well, I'll let you answer that and I'll finish the question.
Yeah, and I have to let, let Mark chime in, but it is a requirement of, it will be, uh, something that staff always put in there. Uh, we can't take it out. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm mistaken, I think the governing body is the only one that can remove that situation. Uh, I'll let Mark, uh, address that as well.
Okay, and let me, I'll ask you this second question, which you kind of already answered, but this loaded up for Mark to answer the whole thing. And that is, I'd sit here with a recollection we have on a not, uh, well, on a relatively consistent basis approved. A, a modification to, uh, external gas spot, but I'm here to be corrected about that perception. So, Mark, do you care to be heard?
Uh, yes, and actually, I apologize, they didn't hear the last part of it. Uh, with regard to, um, the right in, right out off of a hundred and thirty fifth street staff. Uh, is not supportive of removing it. We, we will want to keep that in. It is something that was agreed to at the time of, uh, preliminary. Um, it offers another way for people to access, uh, the apartments off of a hundred and thirty fifth street. And so we would be supportive of leaving that in and not, not removing it. And I'm sorry, what, what was the second part?
Mark, there were two questions that I really was putting forth. Number one is, is staff's position on the internal downspouts? Dan, Dan was of the view that it's a matter of the LDO, that we have no flexibility with respect to, uh. Uh, recommending to change and that only the city council can, can change and can approve or a deviation for that. I had a recollection that I'm looking to you to tell me that wrong on, that we have on a number of occasions in the past. Uh, frankly, over staff's objection, but have, uh, uh, recommended for approval, uh, non-internal downspouts. Can you refresh me on the part of district?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. This is a, a stipulation that we've included, um, pretty much consistently throughout the time I've been here at least with regard to internalizing the downspouts. Uh, there has been some discussion, we, I believe we even had a work session on it, uh, with regard to, um. Would it be all right as far as to not internalize the downspouts on, uh, what are residential buildings? Um, I think in this case, they, as they did with the first and second phase, uh, they're requesting that that stipulation be removed. Um, my recollection is that the planning, with the work session of the planning commission. Um, that the planning commission did want us to keep that stipulation in. And let the planning commission to make the determination of whether, uh, they felt that it was appropriate, uh, to remove the stipulation to internalize the downspouts. And I think a lot of it kind of came down to, uh, what the buildings look like. Um, if they felt that they are more of a residential character, um, I think the planning commission kind of indicated that you're more willing to, uh. Eliminate that stipulation, however, on more commercial, uh, style buildings, they probably would not. Um, that, that's my recollection.
And Mark, just, just to make sure I correctly heard you there, it was your recollection that it was that the. That our thought in the work session was that the planning commission, uh, can make that recommendation or that would be something that should be referred to the city council?
No, I believe we, we talked about the planning commission. Um, it'd be making a recommendation and again, everything that you, um, recommend, uh, is reviewed by the governing body. Um, with regard whether they want to, uh, follow your recommendation or, or not. So it's possible at the city council or the governing body that they would add in the stipulation if you removed it or vice versa. Um. But it was my understanding that the planning commission wanted to be able to see the, uh, elevations of the buildings before a determination was made as far as whether the downspout should be removed or not.
True, but I, I know that it's a stipulation, not an adage, but it is, I believe, it's like, you know, required.
And, and, and that's correct, there is no LEU development ordinance that states that they have to be internalized. It's just been a stipulation, uh, that's always been included.
That was moved on phase one and two, and also I think the, uh, last week, but well, that's it.
Okay, so with phase one and two, whether it was us or the city council, ultimately that, that requirement was removed, that stipulation removed. That sounds like there's consensus that it is not a matter of the LDO requirement, which would.
Correct, it is not required by the LEU development ordinance.
Which would then give us at least the authority to make a recommendation regarding by, like, where to go.
Yes.
All right, uh, can we confirm that place one and two, that downspouts were? Mark, can, can you confirm for us that, yeah, the internal downspouts were removed out of phase one and phase two?
That's my recollection, but we can definitely, definitely check that.
Well, it, it may be important for a decision that we're about to make here, so that's something we can land on tonight.
Yes.
I have.
Okay. Dan, you look like you want to say something.
Oh, yeah, I was saying we could try to find that out for sure.
All right, um, I think we may have finally gotten all my questions. Thank you for sitting with me. Thank you for sticking with me later, uh, let me look just real quickly here. I think the desk has gotten to finding concerns, uh. Do you have anything else to add tonight? If not, uh, we'll move to a discussion and I'll open up the floor to whoever wants to speak to the issue.
Uh, before we go on, what, can we just go over the things that they want to manage through the rest of us?
Well, yeah, I just thought we might address those and just kind of. I'm not, I'm not heading towards a vote yet, still, uh. It's block, too much block.
I would say we're moving the proposal forward, um, I think that we should leave the write-in uh, to the governing body, that's where that discussion. Uh, started, I think that's where it should be resolved. Uh, and I'm okay with uh, only on these brownstones, put the gutters on the back. Uh, as we uh, apparently approved in the first phase, first and second phase, and I know we got a. Uh, regions apart just to the south, so I think the precedence out there with this type of building to uh, not have the gutters in front of us.
Mr. Coleman, your thoughts on the two issues that are out there?
Um. I agree with Commissioner Block, I think, the bringing out. Would be kept in, council decide that instead of the performance of that. And also, but I think any. Any more options you have to, to alleviate traffic from one hundred thirty third street on a pure, pure thing. Uh, so we still want to stay in for our purposes, we want the council to be the final side. Uh, and, and the downsides, I just want to be consistent. If we did it for everything in phase one and two. Uh, if we're just keeping for the brownstones, I want, like, I want to see what we've done previously in this fall.
Commissioner Stevens, thoughts?
Uh, no, I tend to agree with the other.
Any thoughts from the writing side?
Commissioner Coleman? Uh, a vote of consistency, we did it in the first phase, the second phase, we went down, so it was good. I had no problem sort of eliminating the like yet, because I didn't think one hundred thirty four should back up. And a little bit of slowing down.
I am uh, in agreement with Commissioner Coleman, uh, giving the right away to the governing body. And, and make the desktop uh, decision consistent with what we did.
Commissioner Paul?
I was just gonna, on Commissioner Coleman's point, is there a additional lane, a turn lane? I don't want traffic, one hundred thirty fifth street's got plenty of traffic already, I can't imagine how much more is gonna happen if this all goes in. But if there's a turn lane that is part of that evening out, that would lead the traffic to be stacked up.
Commissioner Stogel?
Yes, so turn lanes would be required for the writing. Is, is it a fairly long one? I believe they call for two hundred fifty, but yes, reasonable.
Yes, Ms. Knight?
I pulled up the resolution for the phase one and two final, which was K three five three two and downsides to come up here in that resolution.
Motion is, they were.
There is no stipulation in that final.
Okay, thank you, that, that's all. Um. Sounds like maybe we're heading towards a consensus on those two issues, uh. Any other discussion on case number sixty dash twenty-three? If not, is there a motion to be had? Commissioner Block?
Chairman, I move for approval about. Case number sixty twenty-three, we've covered phase three and four, request approval by ten, by flats. Will be the south one hundred eighty, third street, which is a plenty lane, uh, to remove stipulation.
Seventeen? And the modification presented by uh, staff from six?
Uh, yes, please, yes.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Stevens, discussion on the motion. Commissioner Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, in regards to the phases three and four, uh, my favorite part are the brownstone units for sale. Uh, I'm very big proponent of farm ownership. Um, I'd like to get away from apartments in Leewood, I'd rather have uh, more housing that is available for empty nesters. Uh, and, and people that still want to own a piece of property, uh, than want to live in Leewood. So I'm excited about the brownstone part, not as excited as, as the additional apartments, um. I think Chadwick Park is, is a great amenity, uh, I just hope that one can see the stuff, there, there's enough parking for it. If it's gonna bring in the area, uh, that part of the biggest concern if they haven't. Pretty solid way of bringing people that there's not parking for.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul.
One other thing, uh, I just do want to make note that we did not receive force lines from the public on this. This is the first time and I'm, if there's one of the nurses that been in front of us, uh, that I can remember that wasn't anything. So, I'm, I'm trusting that this phase is a good sign that at least the neighbors. Uh, are more appreciative of this, with the next and the, and the uh, the brownstones and the Chadwick Park.
Or at least less opposed. Other questions on, other comments on attending? If not, we'll go, we'll do a voice uh, vote on this, or a, a roll call vote on this. Uh, Mr. Carl, uh, Mr. McGurran?
Nay.
Mr. Veldman?
Nay.
Mr. Coleman?
Uh.
Mr. Block? Mr. Stevens? Mr. Gaiet?
Aye.
I have a five two vote in favor of recommending case number sixty dash twenty-three to the governing body. With the modifications to the stipulations uh, that were indicated in motion. And with that. We'll move to the next item on our agenda. And that is case number sixty-six dash twenty-three cornerstone warning star senior living. Uh, we got through approval, the final plan located north one hundred thirty seventh street and east of Knoll Avenue. The staff wish to hear?
We do.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, number of the standing mission, this is case sixty-six dash twenty-three cornerstone warning star senior living. Request for approval of a final plan for a two-story one hundred and five thousand five hundred square foot residential building. On four point one acres within their four hundred and five. The preliminary plan um, was approved also with respect to use for it in February of this year with the zero one nation. The project site is currently vacant and situated on the west side of the cornerstone development, north of Church and Resurrection property. The building will now have one hundred and three units, uh, thirty memory care and seventy three living. Which wasn't increased from the hundred units that was three previously. With the addition of this facility, the square footage of development was flipped over the point two five for area ratio allowance. And the developer uh, provided a small space to allow for this action. There are two mainicular entrances to this property. They both enter into it uh, via internal drives, one located on, on the northeast side and the other on the south side. Multiple sidewalks surround the site, including a five foot sidewalk along from the building on the east side. And the five, three, six foot sidewalks around along the eastern edge of the site, linking the suburbs to the northern end of the building. A parking study, what it turns uh, was reviewed and approved with the preliminary plan in February this year. To allow parking ratio of zero point seven zero parking stalls per unit. The building is supposed to be twenty-seven foot tall from grave to the top of the building. A flat roof is proposed for this building and will be using a white TPO membrane material. The main entrance to the building is located along the east elevation, along with a porch to share that extends over the main entrance. The final elevation proposed a mix of materials for the facade of the building. Which includes cemented stucco, manufactured stone, and horizontal fiber cement siding and a wood grain heater color. Colors for the building are shades of off-white and chalk to complement yet or warm tones within the cornerstone development. Two courtyard located in, in building and turnout in building for residents in both the memory care and specific limited four thousand. A patio with a pergola is located on the south side, reused by the road to more depth. And another public outdoor seating area with pergola is located along that sidewalk on the eastern side of the property. These pedestrian areas will be furnished with chairs, benches, et cetera. The applicant is proposing a mix of fruit tree, or melon tree, shrubs, and also native plant. The proposed final landscape plan meets the requirements of the LEU development. There will be new uh, parking lot levers to match the existing one to the new developments, it will be eighteen foot from base to the top of it. Simon does not review or approve this application and the cornerstone development does have through uh, sign guidelines that will have to be. This application meets all requirements of LEU development arguments and staff has been with approval of the sixty-six, sixty-six dash twenty-three. If the stipulation is accepted, or if the application is accepted.
Thank you, question to staff.
The pressure of the comment, Commissioner Coleman, uh, just run through uh, elder care issue. Uh, I think there are professionals uh, in the area that will be involved in this kind of service and I think the president.
Questions, Commissioner Block?
Um, Catherine, just on the uh, my question from actually the earlier case, we need to charge it, and I got it. Interesting that the, the fire marshal asked for these shut offs of the charging stations and I don't, we've seen that anywhere. Uh, it was this site unique that requires that, or do you have any insight as well?
I think that's a new, um, I think that uh, the fire marshal is using adding. Um, this, I think this is speculation, but it may be because in this case they are providing chargers and some of them not getting started out of the market for them. Um, so I think that may be why they're having shut offs early rather than later. Um, so for the other one, potentially could be another final plan or when uh, where this is the final, when they are planning on proposing. I believe their level two chargers, uh, right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess then maybe that's, you know, as I made the comment in the earlier case, I think we probably do, I, I would. Prefer that we kind of maybe address this as a LDO, you know, and announce just futures where we ask. Insistency and I ask everyone to do my thing.
I think we're uh, working through that.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Block, Mr. McGurran?
My recollection of this case uh, in the preliminary version was there, there was a significant conversation about the park. And recognizing that there's shared access. Is it still fair to say that the parking that would be to the east across the street to the east is still unpaid? Uh, kind of open land?
There is some still unpaid over there, um, I know we also had a discussion at that time about the valet potential. Uh, I think that's still at the option with the uh, developers kind of working through. Um, the parcels, if I'm thinking of the right ones, might be owned by a different ownership on that side of the property line. Uh, but based on the different facilities that the developers running, they've got a different seven, it seems to work okay for that.
I'll ask the applicant, we get our chance about the number of employees on site, all of that. My recollection was that the concern was that Mother's Day, Father's Day, and Christmas, and Thanksgiving, and all, all the major holidays. And, and the scenario where these people aren't getting out on their own, so everybody's gonna come to them. And I just want to see if we feel like that's been resolved, do, do you feel like that's been resolved?
I think so, um, like you said, it's, it'd be more potentially a holiday or special event situation. The valet might not be used all the time, so on a normal Monday to Friday, it might not be, it's been an issue. Um, but for those who did, that, you know, someone has to park further away, that valet really. Give them the ability to spread out the parking and not have to crowd up that.
Just to clarify, did you say that you thought the parking across the street to the east was under different ownership and potentially not part of the agreement?
So there are some surface lots, well, it is part of the project as parking. Uh, I think the parts all are owned separately, but I think they could be used if they're residential parking, that it's just on a separate ownership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. Other questions? If not, I would invite the applicants to step forward. Welcome back to the commission, sir, if you could state your name and address, it would be great.
Good evening, uh, down there in Hoben, according to our practice, fifteen ten, six grand, and so it's thirty. Uh, I'm here tonight with both the developer owners, operator, and the head of the year, while they want to be answering a question. I've got a few comments here, just couldn't find without it, I don't want to. I think the basic first is that difference between primary development plan and final plan is really just beginning with a couple minor changes. We wanted to prove the primary development plan to her closely with Mark, with Catherine, with. Well, fire, our hand building, fire ticket, and from uh, so you guys know where we had a pop six meetings with the. Preliminary and now private development, so I think we really capital and brought everything together and love our public opinion. Basic plan is exactly the way that preliminary development plan, for footage, we reduced the building a little bit. There's been a little shift of the number of memory care units increased slightly as a result of. Global market study analysis that came back, but also because of the real need within the building to try to maximize our efficiency. So, we've been able to, to change it with a minor modification to go from one hundred to one hundred and three units. But it's strictly within the confines of the next, we need to. Uh, that has been supported by that change. That change did not affect any of the private requirements for the building. Uh, so that, that, that was a key component, was that we were able to maintain all of our, you know, required abilities and. Three things like that. Um, to answer the one question, block thought up, it comes with the fire coming. What's happening across country is that with the heat station, fire departments are, are having to come to different facilities to have. Whether the fire that doesn't occur, something happens that the charging stations. This shut off allows them to come and not have the inside ability to make that distance. But that's really what you say, you need to put the fire department as a response to the sites. Uh, I think you gotta see that coming forward, uh, as a condition, uh, fire parts, all across the country will be bothered. Uh, we have two different locations that are provided, project that will be convenient, it's not up in and will be installed with. Uh, the other thing that we've done is we've worked staff in terms of uh, limited conditions, which means sort of better. And you are, uh, finding that, the work, where it's been changed here. But in terms of the other conditions and approvals that staff made, um, we are in support of everything, that two little minor modifications. Otherwise, um, we work here and don't want to introduce questions.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to get a little bit of perspective on the parking and, and remember, can you remind us, uh, how many employees would be on site at the? Peak, is he given decker? Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, if you could state your name and address for a record.
Sure, yeah, I still know, uh, I'm Frank, yeah. Uh, the address is seven five five, East London, when you recall that. Uh, so to answer your question on parking staff, obviously it's a lot, uh, so. At peak staff, forty-five percent, I could see, we might have to save on thirty-five, forty-four. Uh, administrative, staff, um, to focus hours as well as uh, subsites. Uh, there is to be three shifts, your counter to forty-five hours, so six, two, ten, could be a shift change for that. So your overlap with the counter, you have the traffic patterns, kind of that share of that. Uh, but I would, so we'd be offering seventy parking spots here, which is actually greater than forty-five other communities that we have. We're operating well here about. Uh, our residents naturally, then we're here, we're not bad at all, but right, some of our residents have kids, have cars. Uh, we provide transportation. Uh, to address your other question about events, we have key events in our industry, Mother's Day, sorry, Mother's. Uh, Easter and Thanksgiving are the three key days, we coordinate set, the off-site parking, we got a rent, so we do that way. We actually just had an opening in Oregon last week where we had a LA setup, got a couple of science. Uh, I can't think of the use that we have left impact on parking that ours because of. Our population and you, we're happy with the, the parking count, it's been, uh, so just that's that.
Okay, so the peak at thirty-five leaves after spaces available. On any given day other than the major holidays, that's gonna be plenty, is your one? Yeah, and, and, and there'll be a little bit of overflow or a lot of overflow on those three major holidays?
So, those are the days where we see our highs bound, but they're not isolated in the city. Uh, but staff is completely prepared for it, will work on it, will have an idea. So, we consider we provide all the deals that are there, we have like headcount, we know it's coming. So the basic play is saying, but it's never a surprise to us when that parking need is there. And we'll arrange offsite parking for. And we'll arrange offsite parking for, for valet. I can tell you. Uh, in twenty plus years of doing this, we've never had the, the boy valet or like Easter or Mother's Day, something like that, because they're not.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My, my second thought, and this might be a little silly, but. Um, maybe the answer to the question is you would not expect any of your residents to be walking outside of the building?
Okay.
You would.
No, I mean, to be a rigid company by staff and some possibly, but yeah, it was, we, we've got two court guards, um.
The drawing that was provided, uh, it shows the sidewalks, the one that so they caught my eye and I thought to myself. You know, when people that have mobility, memory or vision issues, this looks like a speckled, uh. Gravelly kind of, and it is gravelly, but it looks like that speckled and, and. Not normal sidewalk.
You don't want the normal concrete.
Oh, not concrete. Okay. Well, the, the drawing is dramatically different than that.
That was just maybe different.
I just want to raise that as a possibility of it, you know, could, could lead to people having a problem to walk.
Yeah, no, so I'll, I'll overanswer that question. Uh, so, uh, mobility paths, making sure there's stability, um, thresholds. All things in the design of the buildings in terms of moving with that rooms. The flooring, shower, very minimal layers. Uh, I can assure you that all of them have. Gardens, everything is considering the average of our resident in the two hundred bowl. So most likely we'd have a, a wheelchair or a walker or a sit. I, we're not trying to make you more.
I believe.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurk. Other questions?
Commissioner Carl. Another staffing question. Uh, the max you have, I imagine is during the day or the week. What kind of do you think staff is there? Usually on place like this?
Yeah, so you mentioned our residents, um, earlier hours, right? Uh, we shut down the user entirely in the middle of the eighteen hour. Uh, they've always been going in, like, for all of, uh. Uh, most of our transportation takes place between the hours of six and maybe. Uh, and we are staffed, there's just less staffing.
Thank you, Commissioner Carl. Commissioner Paul.
Um, sir, just, uh, out of curiosity, what, what's the cost, uh, for memory care? As opposed to assistant development? Yeah, just roughly ballpark. Yeah, cause I, I know this is not medicated, so it.
It is not. No, there is, um, person by the day, uh, so we have a facility in memory care. Uh, and so we offer, uh, symptoms with vital. Uh, care, but we're not actually dropping any, uh, to that. Activities are there, so bathing, clothing, room, meal, autopsy, laundry, all, it's another one, one charge spare. Uh, bread spare is based on payroll that's needed for the resident. So there's a very good stack going to that enterprise as well. Uh, it ranges from thirty five hundred all the way up to, I think, a thousand dollars if somebody has twenty four month care. Right? Uh, but that would be people on, you know, anticipate that being very, very, I know that would be a little surprising if you're like, you know, as family, but you're. You're getting therapist, it's not surprising. Uh, but that's your average, uh, overall range, kind of like that.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul. And I believe you said you had a couple of issues with stipulations. Let's get to those.
Yes, sir. Um, we did, and we have a handout coming up, passing out. Um, which strictly had to do with the conditions number ten and number twenty six. All of the other items that were staff, I can be, we are, when our spending program, and it's really when we have to do this to working. Uh, item number ten just had to do with some minor changes associated with the solar ready components. What we're basically doing is that we provide the conduits home within our building and electrical rooms. That will penetrate up through the roof, be above the roof by approximately twelve inches past. We got a, a electrical conduit that needs to go in and be placed in front of it. That was an agreement that we reached with staff. We just changed and recommended the whole party stand in the way that it's in the fire. Item number twenty six, even more simple, it's just matching to the other, uh, stamped concrete that's in. So it's, it's changing the. And we have one of these, uh, probably those.
Does staff appear to comment?
Um, we were agree with that. Yes, I spoke with Mark this afternoon and now we are.
With both changes?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? If so, you may step back. Uh. That moves us to discussion of the consideration of case number sixty six dash twenty three. I, I would lead off by saying that, uh. I think this is a great start, that this is an unmet need for Leewood and, and I thought for a long time that we need more. Uh, of this kind of housing and, uh, it's a good start. It's real, to me, it's relatively small, but, uh, it is a superstar. And so I thank you for, for bringing your, uh, your business and, and this care facility to the city of Leewood and it's all looks very positive to me. Uh, other comments? Commissioner McGurk?
I would agree completely, and I think this is an excellent side for it. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Other comments? If not, do I hear a motion? Chair of the hearing? I'll go with Commissioner McGurk on the staff.
Thank you. I move for approval, uh, corner shown, morning star, senior living, request for approval of the final plan. Located north of one hundred and thirty seventh street and east of mall, case number sixty six twenty three. With the modifications to the two stipulations as noted previously.
Give her a second. Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. All those, is there any exception on the motion? If not, all those in favor of recommending case number six, six, twenty three, the governing body with the modifications, the stipulations that indicate, need to indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, same side. The ayes have it and case number sixty six dash twenty three is recommended to the governing body for proof. And thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I would ask that there might be a motion to extend our meeting to, uh, nine thirty. Chairman, Mr. Paul.
Uh, I'm going to send leaving for additional thirty minutes.
Thank you. Give her a second. Thank you, Commissioner Block. Excuse me, exceptions, the motion. All those in favor of, uh, extending our meeting to nine thirty, please indicate by saying not. Aye. Those opposed, same side. The ayes have it and the meeting can extend it. Yes, I'm just saying, thank you. Heather, your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
The commission now calls. Okay, uh, why don't we take a five minute break and we'll take case number seventy six, seven twenty three.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
When we call case number seventy six dash twenty three, A, B and C, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment, section sixteen dash two. Dash six point one, S D zero, plan office district sixteen dash two dash six point four, M X D mixed use development district. And sixteen dash three dash nine, A, A deviations, retain a maximum ability in height. The staff wish to be heard?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, uh, there's actually three LEW development ordinance amendments that are directed at the. Um, same issue with regard to, uh, the reduction of height as of right. Uh, within the, uh, planned office and also mixed use development districts. Uh, however, also allowing a deviation to allow an increase in height. Um, I did want to ask it, you should have a, um, a memo from the chamber of commerce. Uh, in front of you on the dais, uh, indicating their, their concerns with regard to, uh, these, these amendments. Uh, so I just wanted to, to make sure that you had that in front of you as well. Um, this is a, these three development ordinance amendments are something that, uh, were directed by the, uh, the governing body. Uh, over a concern with regard to some of the heights of the buildings that, uh, have been getting approved and maybe thinking that it might be a little bit. Uh, too tall as far as to allow, uh, for instance, ninety feet, uh, for both the S D O, which is the planned office development district and the M X D. Uh, which is mixed use development district. And so these particular amendments will replace and put a maximum of fifty five feet. Um, instead of the ninety feet and in the case of the S D O. Um, but planned office, it would also remove the section that says six stories, uh, and just leave it at the fifty five feet. Um, in addition to that, however, there would be a LEW development ordinance amendment that would allow as far as deviations. Uh, to exceed that fifty five feet in height, as long as there was a super majority, um, vote by the governing body to. Um, to allow that increase over that fifty five, um, feet. Uh. Staff is willing to, um, hear any questions and thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Questions for staff as respect to case number seventy six, that one. Commissioner McGurk.
I, I'm not remembering off the top of my head what the, uh, building is, that's the condos, if you will. Uh, there is the tall building that's currently being built off of road.
The residents of the apartment.
Okay, just as an example, how tall is that?
We've seven five.
Seventy five. Yeah, I. I. I kind of get the logic that says, you know, you're going to operate on one hundred and thirty fifth street, you've been working for decades under the hundred and fifty, fifty three plan. Uh, you have to, we raised this to ninety, didn't we? Because somebody wanted to build something that was ninety, we were okay with it.
Actually, the, the ninety feet has been in place since the, this development ordinance was adopted, uh, back in the end of two thousand and, uh, two. Uh, so it had always allowed as far as for office, six stories and ninety feet. And then with regard to the, uh, ninety feet, it had always been allowed within the mixed use development district. Um, however, the deviation section that's being modified with this application, um, it previously would have allowed as far as an excess. And mixed use development, uh, to go above that ninety feet.
I should wait for my, the comments section for the rest of, like, say, but I was just curious, seventy five feet. Thank you. Other questions?
Well, Mark, I think a question I've got for you, uh, relates to the, um. The deviations and one of the deviations is, this identified here is the law of the construction of signature buildings unique to the area. And I guess my question for you is to get staff's perspective and I, and I understand. From some additional research that, that's been done, that this is not a new provision, signature buildings, uh, was a term that was used. Uh, previously. But what, what would be the criteria that you would use or that you would expect the commission to use? To determine that a particular project constitute a signature build?
And I think there's a lot of things that it can actually make up as signature building. It could be as far as the architectural design. Or how the building relates to the surrounding area, uh, in which it's located in. Or potentially even have several signature buildings that kind of work in union, uh, to create, create kind of a, a. A identity, uh, kind of a signature identity for that, uh, particular portion of the development. And so I thi- I think what we'd be looking at is something that was different than what you, you normally see as far as the typical. Uh, office building, retail building, uh, something that had elements, uh, especially the architecture, uh, with regard to making it stand out.
Okay, thank you. And as I recall, uh, I'm probably not going to use the right term here, but the, the parapet, the, the, uh, mass. The mechanical, uh, uh, machinery on the roof of a building is not typically counted in the height of the building. Is that right?
Correct. The, the parapet and any mechanical equipment, uh, on top of the building, including elevator overruns are not included in the height.
Are there, are there examples of six story buildings? Well, yes, are there examples that you can point us to of buildings that are greater than six stories? Uh.
I don't know any that are greater than six stories. I do know of two that are six stories. Uh, those are buildings R one and R two, uh, located in the Park Place Development. Uh, they are six stories and they're seventy-seven feet in height.
And would topography have qualified them for a deviation in your, in your mind right now?
With regard to that site, probably not. The elevation of the property is pretty consistent uh, with as far as the surrounding um, where the public right-of-way is and also adjacent development. Basically, what the stipulation or what the change to allow as far as uh, increased type for topography is if you had a situation where maybe uh, the topography was lower in a particular area and therefore a, the building itself wouldn't appear quite as tall.
And then I guess in the changing topics just a little bit, as I recall, the standard for this uh, governing body to overrule a decision by, or a recommendation by the uh, planning commission is a two-thirds super majority, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
And again, I I understand that this app was important, but but why create an even higher bar for uh, a deviation?
I I think the reason why we, what we stuck with spars with the three-fourths majority vote of membership is that that was also the the same standard that was used as far as to allow increases of height above ninety feet uh, for mixed-use development. And so we felt that it was appropriate in this case as far as to to keep that standard.
No, it's just a continuation of the process that was already, yeah, the process that was already in place.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? If not, thank you, Mark. We appreciate the presentation. Uh, that brings us to a public hearing, I believe. Um, is there, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on case number seventy-six dash twenty-three A, B, or C? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure.
Commissioner Coleman.
I know it's supposed to come like that.
Is there a second? So thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the public hearing is closed. That takes its laundry discussion, and I believe that Commissioner McGurk had some comments that he wished to share.
Thank you, sir. Um, I I am okay making an adjustment, uh, but it, this feels extreme to me. Going from ninety to fifty-five uh, seems extreme. Uh, going from two-thirds to three-quarters seems extreme. Um, I, um, I get that we don't want this canyon concept, but we've talked about that, maybe people talked about that for the last thirty years, and it doesn't exist on one hundred and thirty-fifth street. There, nobody's coming in and offering to build all those huge buildings. So there's part of me that if it needed to be moved down to eighty feet or maybe seventy-five feet, I I would feel better about that. But in my opinion, this is too limiting. Uh, and if I owned land out there, I'd be very frustrated by this. Um, because I'd still be hoping for the big scenario again. I I, Mr. Coleman, uh, Commissioner Coleman and I have said repeatedly that it it, I kind of hope that what is happening on that seventy-five-foot building off of road, I kind of hope that that's a huge success, that there might be five more of these at some point, you know, built out south. Not, not that I can afford any of those, but it is another cool opportunity to live in Leewood in a completely different environment, you know, with height and view and, you know, all that kind of stuff. Uh, and if they were successful, uh, I I would welcome more of those to the right places. So that's my opinion.
Commissioner Bell.
Yeah, I agree that I think it's very extreme, especially in light of the fact that East Village was just approved at sixty-two feet. So they're already over what we're now changing to, I think fifty-five. I I mean, I think going from ninety to seventy-five seems more reasonable.
Commissioner Gaia.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it is way too limiting, especially for a mixed-use development districts and planned office districts where we do want to see the variation in heights and allow for a, the possibility of more density in those, in those types of district. I think it's, it's too limiting to go down to fifty-five feet.
Mark or Dan, either one, what, uh, at at seventy-five feet, how many stories does that practically accommodate?
Seventy-five feet is close to by six stories, you say, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, currently right now, just to, just, just to give the governing or the planning commission some ideas as far as the the heights of buildings that we currently have. Because what I did is originally I looked as far as to see uh, what some of the standards were with regard to number of stories. And I was actually finding a lower number uh, with regard to the four stories, that generally fifteen feet on the first floor and ten feet for the other floors, which would get you around forty-five feet. Um, when I started looking at the buildings that were within the city of Leewood, I noticed that they were uh, actually taller. Um, some of the four stories that we have, for instance, our East Village, uh, you have the four stories that are located in those three uh, uh, apartment buildings that you were talking about earlier tonight, and those were about fifty-one feet. Um, we do have another four-story building uh, with regard to one thirty-five, or wait, I'm sorry. Um, with regard to. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we did have one, uh, access lots that are located over a park place. Uh, that's the smaller building. Uh, it's an apartment building that's kind of, um, it's four stories, so it's a little bit shorter than what the uh, other residential towers are over at Park Place. That one's four stories, that one was actually sixty-two feet in height, so that one was a little bit more. Uh, but I was trying to strike a balance as far as between what we've seen as far as some of the standards in other areas as well as what what we see in Leewood.
So this, just to make sure I'm cracking, the seventy-five-foot limit would would basically accommodate a six-story building, correct?
Yeah, we have two six-story buildings that are seventy-seven feet, so I imagine it would be probably possible to get a six-story building within that seventy-five feet.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
I find myself looking at the opposite way. Uh, and I came from Charlotte, number two area is South Park and downtown. We had a small island with larger buildings. And then thinking through around that, they became the go-to place, and it became the other offices for people that didn't need to go down to Charlotte. And it really was very good commercial center. And I I just think it was a magic in that it was planned already. And as I look at seventy-five feet, the Liberty Memorial follow-up is two hundred and seventeen feet. So it was less than half that size, I believe, I know. And uh, I think if they have to go higher in special situations, it does pretty definitely uh, urban areas is developed.
Thank you. Commissioner Block.
Yeah, I just don't think there's that much more space to be developed in that corridor. Uh, you know, with this project that we um, in third, third or fourth phases, um, you know, things are going on the south side and and further down with the uh, homes. Um, I can't remember the name of the complex there on road. Uh, you know, I just, I guess I don't see this tunneling issue, and I I guess I would just advocate this, or 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 decide, or I'm a to to Leewood, I'm just, you know, the process, I think, is fine. I think we're in search of a problem, I guess.
I I guess the concern is that history will tell us that, well, we've got a bunch of plans to approve right now, that maybe a third of those will actually get constructed, and and we'll be seeing them again with perhaps more, more density. But of course, even in the current system, we have the three-quarters vote that we can, that we had at city council to uh, to increase for the name, uh, or, yeah, I guess it's older than that, but.
Well, I'm not sure if I, I mean, you know, because I mean, Regent Parks aren't construction. I mean, and I understand this one, I do know Jeff Snyder, I guess, you know, interest rates, things that they talk about, maybe not getting to the ground, I guess that could change, but at least, you know, if all indications are that that would be a point is, and sort of that. So so I guess, you know, untouched uh, or parcels of land along there, that don't already have private, under construction, you know, are very limited. Uh, you know, it leaves my mind, but.
Yeah, I think it's around forty percent, actually, if you look at it. Uh, but again, you're exactly right. Obviously, Regent Park is is, they moved a lot, they're starting to put things in the ground, and all indications from his brother are that he's going to build this, this development. So you're absolutely right. Want. Commissioner Coleman, comments, your thoughts?
I'm I'm aligned with um, Commissioner Black. I don't think it's a good issue, I I think we're, it's not necessary at this time.
Any other comments? Commissioner Stevens.
Well, I might, I might just add too, that I, I I think when this came up, if you remember, I believe, uh, there was a work session that this group talked about it. And I I guess that came back from council wanting to look at lowering the heights, and it seemed to be concerning. Uh, even at that time, but I I know one thing that Mark and staff presented was that the remaining key properties along the corridor there really were were well-suited for signature buildings, signature height, and would be engraved. Or, you know, could be where those would be approved to exceed this, this height reduction. But I, yeah, like you, I'm, I'm kind of thinking it's the current, the current heights for the next use, and I agree, and all seem to be fine in that you know, maybe this doesn't need to be across-the-board reduction in those heights and and even a more stringent view to increase above the four stories, ten-nine to four, this was three-quarter boat. So I don't, I mean, I.
And. Commissioner Bell, I don't, we could, you. And.
I did, I, oh, I decided that I had this two.
Oh, you did, I saw. So I'm not sure that I'm sensing a consensus here, but I would entertain a motion, and we'll see where it may take.
And Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mark's chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I could just add one more, more thing. I think the governing body, really where this kind of came from, is when uh, they started seeing some of these buildings go up there a little taller. And then with the East Village, uh, especially, you know, having those four-story buildings, they kind of thought that that may be uh, a nice standard for the uh, standard height, and then using the the deviation to actually make sure that anything larger than that uh, did kind of meet that signature um, qualification, or at least with the uh, topography didn't appear quite as tall.
Uh, yeah, I I, I think we probably need a, need a vote, and it could be a motion to recommend denial, or it could be a motion to recommend approval, or it could be a motion to recommend approval at seventy-five feet, whatever the, the pleasure of the motion maker might be.
Because at that point, that's, that's part of our discussion before we make a motion. Would people prefer to decline this? Would people prefer to establish seventy-five feet instead of ninety and two-thirds, that we borders, what 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 is the prevailing?
Also, to continue. I'm gonna continue. I I'm not, I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what even, I continue to put a thought here. So it's just, that's the first we've ever. Do you need any?
I would believe that we have to change whatever.
Then we recommend denial, or we make a recommendation to the governing body for denial of case number seventy-six, twenty-three, A, B, and C. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurk. Okay, so we have a motion pending to recommend to the governing body that case number seventy-six, dash twenty-three, A, B, and C be denied. Is there any additional exception on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of recommending denial of case number seventy-six, dash twenty-three, A, B, and C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And I'm sorry, Sherry, I wasn't looking very closely. Did you vote aye?
I did.
Thank you. So on a uh, seven-zero unanimous vote, case number seventy-six, dash twenty-three, uh, is recommended to, is recommended that the governing body deny seventy-six, dash twenty-three. Additional matter to come before the commission convenes? Thank you, we had a great discussion this evening, that was excellent, I appreciate all the hard work and one of our later ones uh, recently. So with that, the next meeting, uh, Dan is uh, August twenty-second.
August twenty-second.
And no work session between now and then?
I don't believe so, I don't know if Mark's still on, I'll think of her.
Okay, very good. In that case, we stand matured, thank you.